And then broadcast there unwilling at 13:03. I'd like to call the Mount Greylock Regional School District School Committee to order. It's Friday, October 16th, 2020, and it is 12:03 PM. Per Governor Baker's order suspending certain provisions of the open meeting law. MGLC 30A Section 20, the public will not be allowed to physically access this school committee meeting. At Mount Greylock Regional School District, our mission is to create a community of learners working together in a safe and challenging learning environment. That encourages restorative based processes, respect, inclusive diversity, courtesy, integrity, and responsibility through the high expectations and cooperation resulting in lifelong learning and personal growth. A quick request before we go to our next agenda item, which is a presentation. Is if anyone would like to make public comment after that presentation, if you could raise your hand now so we can get an idea of a count, we currently have, I think, five people signed up ahead of time, so that would be appreciated. Thank you. Okay, so I'm gonna turn it over to Joe.
Thank you.
All right, Christina, do you want them to raise their hand in the participant bar?
If that is, yes, that would be.
Looks like participant, and then there's a feature there that says raise hand in case anybody doesn't know that.
Thank you, Carrie.
Yeah.
All right, thank you. So before we get started, I want to point to a public website that was created with a lot of thanks going out to and hard work. Appreciative for Stacy Vizard, who really pulled together all of the information that we could find over the history of the capital gift related to this topic. It is here at the URL that is on this cover slide that you hopefully can see over Zoom right now, HTTPS colon slash slash sites dot google dot com slash MGHS dot org slash fields slash home. This presentation was just posted within the presentations folder on that site, so it will be available now and into the future. That link that I just read off is also on the district's website. As you click to view this meeting, it will also be available as a part of the agenda minutes and description on the website. So without further ado, a little bit of background, I just, I think what what I feel like I should be doing here today is providing as common a base for the discussion for people who are new to the subject and for people who are experienced with the subject alike. And I'm trying to do that as objectively as I can to not influence any decision in any direction. So background, 2016, Williams College pledged $5 million for the capital needs of Mount Greylock Regional School that were outside the scope of the building project. The college treats this fund like an endowment in that it grows and recedes with the college's investment of its own endowment. The college's gift was intended at the time to help Mount Greylock navigate around the MSBA project limitations and the scope of what was included within the building project in areas like fields outside the building, parking, storage, regional district offices, long-term maintenance costs. Those are all areas, by the way, that the MSBA, when it is matching funding, it does not help local communities in terms of funding what they need to do there. And so it is an area that the school district needed to try to address on its own, and the college's gift was a real gift in that need. So 2017 to the present, the use of funds focused on the following. A long series here athletics and fields and recreation, pretty much anything outside the building related to the students' needs. ADA compliance is a part of that. Title IX compliance is a part of that, and upgrading the general environment for the students is, of course, a part of that. District offices, storage. Storage is a general term, but it applies to all of our athletic storage, our facilities, storage. Be commonly in past meetings, you'd hear people talk about attic stock. When we built Mount Greylock Regional School, we were required to have a fair amount of additional materials for renewing the building on hand. That's an integral part of the project, and but we don't have, we didn't have place to put those. So attic stock is a part of storage and district records, all of the personnel and other files that we are required to keep on hand for many years in paper form. As of right now, the part of that conversation, and then a long-term maintenance fund. It grows with the college's endowment over time and can address the schools' needs over time as the building ages and needs renewal. So accomplished to date, there's been a constant evolution of the available plans for the overall project. Desires for use of the gift have always extended beyond the monetary value of the gift. I think that's been a consistent theme, just factually. The things that people want to be able to do with the gift extend. Originally, it was way beyond the value of the gift, and that has been whittled down over time. Part of that whittling down has been through numerous rounds of value engineering that have reduced the scope or moved things from the primary scope of what might be put out as an RFP out to add alternate spaces, which in RFP and bidding terms are are places where when you put out an RFP, you're saying, here's what I definitely want to do as a part of this project. And here are things that I will add into the project if money and the desire allows as we're entering the project. So $500,000 in design planning, temporary storage and office costs, and a Mount Greylock Regional School repair that already happened have been sunk out of that gift already. $110,000 from non-gift funds, meaning from the regional school district's own appropriated or revolving funds were allocated for facility storage and Nordic ski on January 9th, 2020, with a commitment by the school committee after a lengthy discussion during that meeting. That led to the procurement of a 30 by 60 prefab structure with foundation and electric for heat, power, light, and ventilation. And the contracts, it went out to bid in June of this year. Contracts are executed, work is underway. But now, more than I think the current team realized, the building is significantly smaller than what was desired. And so that is still something that I know has been hanging with us as we've received emails from the public, especially over the last week, week and a half. The district office, a storage component, and public and athletic bathrooms were completed this year. And that's about $2.6 million in hard costs associated with that effort. So if we take the 500,000 and the 2.6, we end up with 3.1 million spent in total from the gift to date. That leaves numerous remaining priorities. Fields and outdoor recreation that encompass ADA compliance with an April 2022 due date for that compliance, Title IX compliance, and upgrades. Long-term maintenance fund is still a topic of discussion and a priority. And there are remaining issues around athletics and facility storage, plus the Nordic ski waxing topic that we just touched on a moment ago. To the state of the gift, and now I'm going to try to jump from place to place that I know are our fact bases that people have wanted to have and that we have put into the website that was published yesterday. State of the gift, it was $5 million at its inception. The college's investment team has done an incredible job with it growing by $1.8 million as of June 2020. As we mentioned before, $3.1 million has already been committed and spent. And so if we take $6.8 million and subtract the 3.1, we end up with $3.7 million remaining as of June 2020. Now, it's important to note, within the gift, the agreement associated with the gift, there is this important sentence, and this document is also up on the website. Unspent principal in the fund will grow or recede without limit along with the college's endowment. What that means is that at any one point in time, so as of November of 2020, or as of May of 2021, it is not assured that we have $3.7 million. We might have significantly more than that available. We might also at that one point in time have less. And so as we make commitments to spend, we need to know that we are spending money that we have, which is, I think, a part of the decision and the way that the school committee needs to think about how they're spending the money and how they're navigating that part of the agreement with the college. Athletic team and physical education participation on the left-hand side is a grid that that Lindsay Von Holtz, the athletic director, updated just this past week. It includes athletic participation, athletic team participation for the last, it looks like seven years of data there. This document is also, I apologize, it's so small here within the slide, it's also up on the website in a file at the top level of the website called MGRS Sports Participation. Participation numbers updated October 2021, which should be October 2020. That's my mistake. That's athletic team and PE participation. In terms of wellness and physical education, that side of it, outside of athletic teams, all of grades seven, eight, and nine participate, and roughly half of each of grades 10, 11, and 12. That results in approximately 375 students at any one time participating in the wellness and physical education program during the school day at Mount Greylock. So now I'm going to give a sense of place in terms of the current fields. So in the fall, the green highlighted areas here on the screen indicate the various fields that school has available to use. They're in various states of repair and levelness and and all of that that goes into a field. The second one from the bottom is the location of John Allen Field, which is regarded as the game field, the primary showcase field for events that are happening with lighting and aging bleachers alongside it. In the spring, the number of fields for use decreases a bit as the baseball and softball fields come into play. The yellow triangles that are there indicate our four baseball and softball fields that are available for our teams. A quick fields update, last winter, PJC Organics conducted a study of all of our existing fields. Poor was the summary grade for every field. The detailed report is up on the website that we've been talking about. Per that report and additional guidance from PJC, from PJC Organics, the district staff have taken the following steps. We've modified our mowing regimen, our internal staff do some of the mowing, and we also use contracted service that does mowing generally on a weekly basis across the campus. We purchased an aerator in the 2019-2020 school year, and aeration is now a regular part of of our maintenance of all of our fields. Overseeding amendments and fertilizer, we started a three-year intensive program in the spring. And after that three-year intensive program, soil biology should take over after that to help make it not so intensive to then maintain, hopefully, good soil across those fields. And we've had more of a staff focus on the fields generally over the last year. So the current results, six months into the process, the fields are significantly improved. They look a lot better right now. One important note from both the report as well as general knowledge by our staff and by the community, our fields do not have any irrigation. And irrigation is important if you want to be able to span all of those times where drought and dry hurt fields that need to be playable for significant chunks of the year. And now, all of that said, the drainage of our existing fields due to both their location and their design is not good. In the early season, late season, and after any rainfall, that poses a significant problem for the playability of all of the existing fields. That goes above and beyond just being a grass field in New England. So now, to try to.
I'm sorry, can I ask a question?
Sure.
How much money did the school committee allocate for the Fields Maintenance Project? Do you know?
So far, this work has come out of the the regularly approved budget. The amount spent to date has been $19,000 total across, you know, from the winter through right now. I am trying to get a more detailed sense, and I don't have it yet, of exactly what that three-year intensive program will cost in total.
Thank you.
Yep. So the proposed new field, this is something where, again, I'm just trying to give people a sense of place so they can see where people are talking about, what they're talking about. The photo on the left here, that's a photograph of the new administrative office, storage, and public bathroom building that I'm sitting in right now. If you look at the red dot on the satellite map, that's roughly where that building is. The satellite map that you see there is, it's not current. A lot of the area still looks like a construction site, so it's, you know, one day the satellite will show what we actually have now, but not quite yet. So that's a photograph looking at the front of the building from the parking lots at Mount Greylock. The next photo that's in the middle is if you're then out in the middle of, or even near the edge of where the proposed new field might be, the highlighted yellow area that you can look at near the corner of the building, that's the entrance to the public bathrooms that are a part of the building. That also, just to give you a sense of where you're looking, if you're looking straight through that photograph, you're looking down towards John Allen Field. You can actually see the scoreboard over there. And then the photograph on the right is looking roughly from the edge of that proposed new field over towards the old track. A lot of people don't realize that there actually are the, there's the remnants of a track that was built a long, long time ago, and you can see the wear on the grass there, where where that track was. It is no longer, it is no longer usable, and the track and field team does not use it. So that's a little sense of place. Now, looking at the fall 2019 RFP that that went out in August and September, and that the school committee reviewed as soon as that came in, in late September. There were three reputable bidders. All of them were 19 and 22% higher than the designers had estimated. The primary goals of that RFP were ADA compliance through roads and parking and pathways. A new field that was turf in this new location, and you can see it there on the map. That's the spot that we were just showing photographs of, lighting for that new field, a complete revamp of the softball field, baseball field, safety upgrades, and a portable bleacher system. So 2.3, the portable bleacher system is something that is similar to what you might see at Williams College, where the bleachers can be moved from one field to another so that a variety of teams at Mount Greylock could benefit from those bleachers. So there's a $2.3 million estimate going into the RFP process, and $2.8 million was roughly where people were coming out and they were submitting their bids. An add alternate on those, on top of those primary goals was a six-lane track. $450,000 was the estimate, and the bids came in between 550 to 850K if the school committee wished to add the track on top of the primary to create a larger overall project with a larger overall cost. So I think it's helpful to look at a breakdown of the relative costs of each of those things within the overall project, and here I included the track in that, just to try to get a sense of where everything was fitting in. I didn't include specific numbers because depending upon the bidder, it did vary. So I used, this should not be used as a precise, don't try to get your protractors out and know exactly how large each slice is here, but all of the specific bid documents are up on the public website, so you can see within those specifics, the type of range that was seen across the different parts of the project, but the field was sitting there around a third of it, the track was less than that, ADA compliance was a fair chunk. Lighting was a significant slice of the pie. Softball, the brand-new field there was a pretty significant part, and the baseball upgrades were their slice as well. So that's just to give you a sense of the overall picture that we were looking at within the possible choices with the flows of the RFP. So regarding the field, because that's been, of course, a big subject within the overall discussion. The new field was put out as turf instead of organic grass for two primary reasons. One was playable hours that are dictated by weather. So early spring, late fall, and after any rain, turf had been recommended by the subcommittee consistently over 2018, 2019, and 2020 based on that, along with the desire to play three seasons on a single field, which is challenging in terms of maintaining a grass field so that it does not have time to recover or build up its surface over time. So those are the two rationales that were most commonly cited by the subcommittee and within school committee discussion over the last few years in terms of why turf instead of organic grass. The concerns over perceived issues around that were student health in terms of impact on legs or heat issues and materials used. The environmental impact of materials and the life cycle associated with those, the cost, both initial and renewal. And I'm putting all of this in quotes because, again, I'm trying to just provide a sense of everything that's happening as opposed to guiding the conversation in one way or another. The responses to those concerns have typically been, there are no proven health issues over decades of use, and the latest products are even better. There's a new biodegradable infill option, which I know a lot of you have heard, it's the Brock fill option that the subcommittee had then recommended as a response. There are plans for recycling the rest and runoff controlled is either controlled or is a non-issue. The grass alternative has significant maintenance costs and renewal. And to once again return to the playability and the three-season use advantages that a turf would have over organic grass. So that's the back and forth in the conversation that I was able to glean from the minutes and from talking to everybody that I could. So continuing that turf versus grass, turf versus grass, there are differing opinions on health and environment. You can see on the website, across all the emails from the community, the documents that people have submitted with third parties, from third parties, there are differing opinions on health and the environmental impacts and how the school committee should see those. The relative costs, the upfront cost estimates were provided by Traverse, which was a part of our design team along with Perkins Eastman for both grass and turf. They presented that within their, within the forum in July of last year. They provided estimates of $500,000 for a grass field and $1 million for a turf field. A key driver within that is the foundation and drainage systems are fairly similar between the two. It's just what you put on top of them that varies. The in-season maintenance costs are higher and more variable for grass. To what extent they're higher depends upon the conditions, the internal versus external labor that is applied to them, and the product choices that you make. Both have renewal costs, and opinions do vary on when and how much. Another point to make that I know people have asked, and the consultants and our staff have looked at in the past, what happens during the winter? There is an option to purchase a special kind of rubber bladed snowplow, and then to use our existing equipment and labor to plow the turf for use during the wintertime. That's something that other people do, and to what extent, it either wears the turf or is too labor or otherwise intensive is, once again, it's a subject of discussion every time a turf field is potentially built in an environment like ours.
No, can I ask a question?
Yes.
So the 500,000 for grass includes a system for irrigation and drainage? If not just like we're planting an organic grass field and we're gonna hope that the sky waters it the way we need it to?
Yes.
Okay.
Yeah.
So it's engineered in the sense of water, water being the main issue?
Yes, what Traverse was putting forward there was a grass field that would have that would have every advantage that it could in terms of draining quickly after rain in the spring and in the fall. And it would require significant watering and care as it's a living thing that would be a high-performance thing as opposed to similar to what we have within our fields at the moment.
All right. It's seed and not sod, is that right? Or is it sod? Do we know?
Seed versus sod is a, there are two ways to go about it, and I believe, and the subcommittee members can and should speak up here if they believe differently, both were on the table, and I actually don't have built into this high-level overview the difference in price and all the parameters around seed versus sod.
Okay, thank you.
Joe, can I ask a question?
Sure.
Just on terms, all grass is organic. So when we say organic field, we mean how we maintain it?
Yes. Yep, in terms of the products that we then, the fertilizer and the amendments that we put on top of that field to take care of it.
I have a question. May I ask a question?
Sam, if you could, please, the school committee members are asking questions right now. If you could hold
your comment to public comment. Great, okay, I will, thanks.
All right, so one more thing, the January 9th, $110,000 commitment that the school committee made out of the appropriated or revolving funds does not solve the combined facility storage, athletic storage, and Nordic waxing issue. That is something that has become all too apparent over the last couple of weeks as the building has started to go up, and the community discussion has ensued around that. The 30 by 60 building that it ended up being, per the bidding, is too small for effective dual use across athletic storage and waxing plus facility storage. One possibility that has come out of discussion with the athletic director, the Nordic ski team, others within the community, as well as the facilities team, is that we could dedicate that 30 by 60 building to fall, spring, and summer athletic storage and shelter from lightning and rain. So when lightning comes, where do the student athletes run to get out of the weather? And also winters Nordic storage and waxing. So that's an option, and asking the Nordic team to do its best to raise funds for adding to that shell to upgrade the electric and add the waxing tables that are not a part of that plan as it is currently contracted and going up. And then procuring a smaller building at the location of the district office trailer that is about to be removed. The estimate from the facilities team here, given the procurement that they went through in April, May, June of this year for the building that's already going up, is that a slightly smaller building would run about $90,000 in order to get its foundation done, tie into the electrical that is already up there, and get a building up that would serve its needs. That is one way to make everybody happy within that trio of needs. And we could solve that problem with the capital gift. We could also try to find other funding sources within our evolving funds. We could also try to find other funding sources within within our evolving funds prior to the end of the project. If if that was amenable to the school committee, we're just trying to, we were trying to listen and put up a possibility that that we could then dig through in more detail. So all of that said, I'm going to leave it with the school committee having a lot of different decision points that it needs to sort through. Like I just touched on, I'm going to keep up on the screen, the additional effort to address storage and waxing. Irrigation for the existing fields in terms of both a water source for them, our our regular buildings, water source is is not sufficient per all of the recommendations that we've seen so far from experts to be able to water our fields in addition to serving the purposes of the building plus irrigation plumbing. That's something that that the school committee should keep on its mind as it's discussing any and all of these projects. ADA and Title IX compliance. In the past, the school committee has sometimes said, perhaps we should put that out to bid first or separate from everything else. Is that a cost effective thing to to decouple them? It it's not clear from the advice that we have from experts so far. We need to review and select the value engineering options before rebidding anything. That's a process that the Phase Two Subcommittee had had initiated and had some recommendations, conversations within its minutes from late last year. It should be a part of any decision. Looking at why the estimates were so much lower than than the bids. Within the bid review, there was discussion about some of the bidders misreading portions of that RFP and submitting bids that were higher than they should have been. That's got to be a part of it. Wire. How do we, how do we approach the turf versus grass question with respect to students and the environment and costs and the availability for play? When when people want to be on that field? The priority around completing the track as a part of the project or how to how to go about that. Additional fundraising options. From the outset, we we've always known that we did not have enough money to do everything that we wanted to do. And so how might we go about expanding our our funds so that we can address more of the needs more thoroughly? The renewal of the Mount Grand Regional School and its fields. That's always gone back to the importance of saving a portion of the gift because we can already see that the the college's endowment. Its investment team has really done a wonderful job taking 5 million and turning it into 6.8 over the course of just a few years. If if we don't look at the gift, I've been asked to to talk about how regional school districts typically handle renewal. And they do it via their excess and deficiency fund, which is capped. The that revolving fund is something that we have. Its maximum is capped at 5% of the budget, which is about $1 million right now, 1.1 million. So that's our maximum right now. So if we had a renewal cost that was $500,000, that would deplete that 1.1. It would pretty much cut it in half in one fell swoop. The stabilization fund is another type of fund. I did put an advisory from the Department of Education, from Massachusetts Department of Education up into the website so that people can take a look at the details there. But the idea is that both towns would need to vote in favor of allowing the school to create a stabilization fund. And then the school could appropriate funds on an annual basis to contribute to that fund and grow it over time for the purpose of things like capital renewal or town votes. So it's it's always an option to get warrants onto town meetings and and request that the towns vote in favor of providing funds outright to a project or or to a building. So those are the typical ways that a regional school district that doesn't have the benefit of a gift like ours would address renewal of of anything sizable related to its its facilities. So I've already taken up too much time, but I wanted to kind of leave all this up there and and say good luck.
Thank you, Joe. Okay, so next up on our agenda is public comment. And before I call on the three people who are in Zoom that have raised their hands, I we had received previously some public comment signups. I just want to remind everyone to try to keep their comments to three minutes in the interest of time and let us know what town you're from and the agenda topic to which you're speaking. We ask that it be relevant to our current agenda. And when I, so I have four emails to read and then I will call on John Scavlam, who is the fifth person, and then I will go from there. I just want to remind everyone, when I read these emails, that these are opinions from the public. And those opinions expressed don't necessarily represent the the views of the school committee. So our first public comment is from Joan Blair of Williamstown. She is, her comment is on the fields. Dear Regional School Committee, first, thank you for achievements. It has taken mammoth effort to provide our towns with a new building. I've been impressed by the planning, teamwork, and depth of thinking needed to achieve a new regional school system and high school building. Second, your COVID planning has been intense, but seems to be going well. Congratulations to board and staff and teachers. Each of you is a frontline worker and I send my thanks that you show up for our children. Third, we are, we are close to elections for new school committee members. I am pleased with all candidates as I have been in previous years. The election outcome does not prompt this letter. Instead, I wish the current committee would not make any policy decisions at the end of their tenure. I prefer to give the new committee members the opportunity to consolidate consolidate final planning and to learn and to bond on the job. Fourth, our new team of administrators and teachers is commencing an unusual academic year. Let's give them the chance to also bond with their new school committee. Making decisions together will build positive relationships going forward. Therefore, I ask that you please stop votes on all major expenditures. We do not yet have a complete picture of COVID expenses ahead for the district and the state. Local taxpayers are interested in continuing extensive planning before being presented with future budgets. COVID brings a new season to all planning. Thank you for your service, Joan Dix Blair, Williamstown. The next comment is from Christian Malone. I believe from Williamstown and the agenda topic is fields. To the school committee and Superintendent Putnam, would you please read this aloud during public comment? Thank you for your collective efforts regarding the proposed athletic infrastructure improvements. It has been a long process and COVID certainly hasn't made it easier. As a parent of two high school students and head coach of the boys cross country team, I would like to reiterate my concerns. Mr. Terranova made a statement at last Friday's meeting to the effect that all coaches have expressed support for the artificial turf field. For the record, that is inaccurate as I expressed my opposition last year when I was an assistant coach. I am still opposed to it for the reasons set forth below. One, an artificial turf field will need to be replaced in each 10, 12 years at an estimated cost of 400,000 to 600,000. Despite claims by the architect that the field is recyclable, there is currently no recycling facility in the US. In addition, these costs would be passed on to the taxpayers. Two, there is potential that PFAS and other toxins and contaminants may lead into the soil and nearby water supply. Even with the use of Brock fill instead of crumb rubber, there is still the plastic carpet to contend with, as well as the unknown environmental impact of Brock fill. Do we want a situation like Husick Falls, New York? Three, a well-maintained grass field would be cheaper over the long term and safer. My understanding was that the school committee was going to have a cost benefit analysis performed, but one has not been made public if it was in fact completed. Why are we rushing before we have a study to compare the options? Four, have the Mount Greylock parents and students been surveyed with respect to what they desire in a field? Whenever a corporation launches a new product, it does test marketing to see what the customers want. I don't think a survey is difficult to do and is the school committee convinced it knows without performing this basic analysis? Five, while I admittedly have a vested interest, I would also like the school committee consider the benefits of having a running track. The cross country and track track teams have historically been two of the largest teams at Mount Greylock and would benefit a significant number of students. Please consider these points. I do appreciate all of your efforts, which I know is a thankless and volunteer endeavor. Sincerely, Chris Malone. The next comment is from Wendy Penner of Williamstown, and it is on the fields. Dear School Committee, I'm writing to express my concern and distress at the school committee's public process in advancing a decision about a turf field and why I think a transparent and responsive process is critical for a good outcome. I recognize from my experience as a school committee member that the critical goal role of an informed and inclusive community process. When I served on the school committee, hundreds of hours were spent preparing materials, holding public presentations and meetings, giving tours of the school, responding to questions and collecting and researching information before we voted on regionalization and the new high school. And this was important because of the taxpayers of Williamstown and Lanesboro not only needed to vote to approve these innovations, but their support and buy-in was critical to the success and legitimacy of these efforts. This stands in stark contrast to what has happened with the research and engagement around investing in athletic fields. As with the new school, public funds are going to be needed to build and maintain, and in the case of turf, replace the athletic fields as well as for all costs related to student athletes, such as a new track or ski wax room. Even if the Williams gift is used to pay initial costs, the lifecycle costs of the athletic complex will be shouldered by the school budget and thus the taxpayers. It is startling that no financial plan has been developed, or at least not shared, especially given the extraordinary financial crisis we are facing as a country and Commonwealth. The community deserves a comprehensive financial plan that includes all the options, including replacement and disposal costs for a proposed turf field and all the needs for phys ed and athletics. The Williamstown Select Board, Finance Committee, and Lanesboro Select Board have all expressed reservations about the spending proposed for this project. Last September, you voted to rebid the project with natural grass as an ad alternate. Community members have shared thoughtful research on the benefits of nat- natural grass with no meaningful response that I know of. Instead, despite community requests and your own commitment to include a natural grass field and deliberations, the plan and cost estimates for the development of natural grass field have not been shared with the community. Today's meeting is being held with virtually no publicity or public notice during a time when many people are either at work like me or at home supporting their children's education during a pandemic. Information was pulled together at the last minute and shared in a difficult to understand and access way. I am assuming today you'll be asked to vote to put forward a rebid for a turf field, a plastic carpet instead of grass, one that will be obsolete and need to be disposed of in 10 years. And no recycling facility currently exists in the US. There are viable environmental and health concerns about turf. There is a potential for huge regret, breaking trust with the community at a time when we are looking so much about equity needs with concerns of austere budgets looming. We do not want to end up having to dig into reserves or call on taxpayers to do more. By voting at this time, you are also disenfranchising the new committee members joining next month. Please wait until the next committee is formed to take any vote with gratitude. The fourth email is from Bridget Span of Williamstown, and it is in regards to the fields. Dear School Committee, I'm writing with concern about the process that has led to a new meeting today scheduled at a time when many people, myself included, are not available due to their work or family commitments. Rather than spending an exorbitant amount on a single artificial turf field, these funds could be better utilized to invest in a new natural grass field and a track to improve the existing grass fields through organic management. The substitution of Brock fill for crumb rubber does not allay the serious financial and environmental concerns about this project. Organically managed natural grass fields are safe, cost effective, and environmentally friendly. Yet the Phase Two Subcommittee doesn't appear to have investigated any serious way the costs or benefits of an organically managed natural grass field. Instead, it only pursued the artificial turf option based on the consultation of Traverse Landscape Architects. Traverse Landscape Architects has designed numerous artificial turf fields, but its website doesn't have a single example of a natural grass field. In its July 2019 presentation to the community, Traverse utilized a cost per hours of use project to present an artificial turf field as a better return on our investment and neglected to provide information and its cost analysis about the significant disposal costs that our community would incur when replacing the infill or the artificial grass carpet. Traverse also referenced a recycling option for the plastic grass carpet that does not exist in our country, but the result that tons of waste from artificial turf fields is piling up because it can't be recycled and nobody wants to pay for proper disposal. In its return on investment chart, Traverse included a 500,000 replacement cost for a natural grass field after 10 years. A figure that perhaps suggests laying down new sod. This figure makes no sense with respect to organic turf fields. After improving the soil chemistry to support the growth growth of the roots of the grass, one would never want to rip out a properly maintained organic grass field and replace it 10 years later. Traverse also indicated the grass fields wouldn't be available during October when they would be overseeded. But a common overseeding practice on high use, high expectations field is to broadcast seed and allow the athletes to cleave it in. The Trinity Engineering Report presented to the school committee on January 9th, 2020, relied on information and consultation from Traverse. This report incorporated cost data from Traverse and utilized the same misleading cost per play hour formula outlined in the Forbes article. For the calculations in this report, it was assumed, again, based on consultation from Traverse, the grass field wouldn't be available for use in October, which further skews their cost per hour play formula. Many people compare inadequately maintained grass fields, which is what the community has experienced at Mount Greylock Regional High School in recent years, to a perfectly maintained artificial field, which is what we see on the Williams campus. While I agree that an investment is needed in athletic fields at Mount Greylock High School, I don't think a single artificial turf field will be help address our concerns for athletes having access to quality playing fields and athletic facilities. For the existing grass fields, depending on their initial condition, three to five years of organic turf maintenance might be needed to bring them up to optimal standards. Although results would be noticed in the first year. Organic management includes soil testing, aeration, applications of organic products, including fertilizer and soil amendments to increase soil qual- quality, overseeding, altered mowing practices and practices in irrigation. For every 1% increase in organic matter, a grass field can hold additional 21,000 gallons of water, which means that organically managed grass fields are available for more days of play as they can handle more wetness than conventional fields. Over time, as the field soil chemistry improves, organic maintenance is less costly because fewer inputs are needed, such that it can be more cost effective than conventional management of natural grass fields. Artificial turf fields are not maintenance free. They also need to be maintained on a regular basis. Fluffing, redistributing, shock testing, infill, periodic static control and chemical disinfection of materials, seam repairs, infill replacement, top surface replacement, field lines erasing and repainting, organic matter removal and watering on lower temper- watering to lower temperature on hot days. Now there is an additional market for new chemical disinfectants for artificial turf fields to address COVID-19 as the virus can can linger on plastic up to three days. However, as COVID-19 is inactivated at temperatures higher than 132 degrees, and artificial turf fields regularly reach temperatures of 132 degrees on warmer days, the increased temperature of the playing surface will not only stress our athletes, it will kill the virus. As you move forward with your decision making process, I ask that you direct, that you be direct with the community about the costs that will incur if an artificial field is installed at Mount Greylock High School and then there are items to be reviewed. Thank you for your serious consideration of this matter, Bridget Span of Williamstown. Next up on public comment is John Scavlam from Williamstown, who will be commenting on the fields. Are you there, John?
Thanks, Christina. Hey. So on the other side of the equation, dear school committee, this request that you please respect and listen to the voices of the stakeholders who have support the recommendations of the Phase Two Subcommittee based on the established need of increasing field playability and safety for the students at Mount Greylock. It is time to move forward with the plans as proposed. Come January, it will be five years since Williams College made the gift to our school. During those five years, an extraordinary amount of work has been done by multiple subcommittees to evaluate and prioritize the needs, develop and redevelop thoughtful plans and engage the community in the process. Like so many, if not every issue in our community, there is not consensus. But there comes a time when a decision has to be made. This was the case for the school building project itself and the matter of regionalization. This recommendation is about providing a resource for our kids at our school, much like a gym or an auditorium, for which there is substantial need supporting the remarkable 70% athletic participation rate and the school wellness program, which is a uniquely inherent part of the curriculum. The specific proposal to construct an artificial turf field represents the most effective, inclusive, and cost efficient means to meet the school's needs. That being hours of playtime, i.e. playability, as endorsed by the athletic director, facilities manager, and most coaches, apparently not all of them. It did not require a pandemic to demonstrate how vital a role such a resource can play, but the but the present crisis certainly has reinforced what it means to be able to get our kids outdoors for the sake of their health, both physical and mental, now more than ever. The independent evaluation from Trinity Engineering submitted at the end of last year most effectively helped support the case for artificial turf versus grass in meeting this need, concluding that it will provide more than double the projected hours of use than a grass field option. What's more, this analysis factors in how the artificial turf field will work in conjunction with the grass Allen Field as intended. Both fields will be used for games by various sports teams. The fields will support one another and a more consistent, successful operation of school programs. Grass fields will remain dominant on the school's roughly 40 acres of open land, which represents an exceptional amount of available field space for a high school anywhere. It is time to rise above politics and recognize the amount of work done. The facts supporting the recommendation and the significant responses made to the community concerns, most notably the recommendation made last December to substitute Brockfill, an organic infill of softwood pellets for crumb rubber, which allows Mount Greylock to lead by example and remain consistent with the values of our community while still supporting the needs of our school programs. If this was the first artificial turf field in our community, perhaps we might better understand opposition, but it is not. And the children in this community regularly play on the Williams turf field and compete on others in the region at MCLA and BCC. Finally, with respect to funding, the fields are there, and multiple sources, the funds are there, and there are multiple sources available to maintain all the schools' fields going forward. This work has started already after decades of neglect, and credit to Tim Sears and his team for the program they have put in place. To ensure there is clarity around facts and figures, the entire recommendation, ADA Compliance Title IX and new field, represents a $2.3 to $2.5 million effort. The proposal for an artificial turf field represents less than half of that expense, and did come in on estimate from one bidder a year ago at 1.1. Since then, a list of deductions from the overall project scope was developed for an anticipated savings of over $250,000 in preparation for rebidding. At the same time, the School Committee has already invested more than $300,000 in constructing public restrooms, as were identified in the photos that Joe showed, as part of the recently completed administrative building to provide for the proposed artificial turf field, as was discussed at their meetings last November. Should the construction of the field not proceed, these bathrooms will be redundant since they are not contiguous, as required by code, to any of the existing fields, and thus would represent a significant waste of funds from the Williams gift. I ask you to once again, please focus on the facts and listen to those for whom the recommendation matters the most, and for whom it is needed. And at the end of the day, this is all about our kids, and providing the best experience possible for them with the resources necessary to safely and most effectively conduct programs designed for their enrichment and learning. We have an incredible new school building that supports this. Why would we not want fields and other outdoor resources, including a track, that provide the same quality experience? Our kids deserve this, and they deserve to finally benefit directly from the Williams gift afforded them. Thank you very much for your consideration and support for the recommendation. I'm John Scavlam, former Chair, Phase Two Subcommittee, former School Committee Member at West, 27 Bing Street, Williamstown.
Thank you, John. Next up, we have public comment from David. If you could let us know what town you're from and the agenda to what you're speaking to.
Sure. David Kaiser Clark, Williamstown, 839 Cold Spring Road. And speaking about the turf field. I've been an athlete throughout my high school, my college, my adult life. I have two children who are in sixth and second grade, and I'm very much in favor of having a turf, bleachers, lighting, new track, new field for our school kids. That's really important. However, I am alarmed and I'm concerned about the process, or what I perceive as the lack of process, the divisiveness that has entered into this process that the School Committee has been going through, and also the lack of discussion. And by lack of discussion, I don't mean lack of content. I mean, lack of a full, complete community discussion. Because what it takes to be able to do this well is to have all of us represented and to be able to work through this in a way so that we can find the best possible path forward. My perception is that the current process lacks transparency, and that it's not inclusive of views that are oppositional to having an artificial turf field. And that means that it's not a real process, in my view. I think it's incredibly important that we respect the scientific studies that show the PFAS carcinogens are dangerous, potentially dangerous to children, that they are known to be carcinogens, that they're endocrine disruptors. And I'm concerned that the present process being taken by the School Committee is breaking trust within our community, particularly because it's not being inclusive. And this is a time when the nation is grappling and struggling with diversity, inclusion, equity. And we in Williamstown like to think that we're better than that, and this process, to me, is reflective of the national divide and not the better way forward, which we are fully capable of doing. I would like very much to have the various offerings at various points, like in September, to have a turf field made of grass fully in the study, to look at the science of that, to look at the the costs of that fairly. It doesn't feel like it's a fair field right now in terms of what we're looking at. The Iberchirrs article from last week, October 10th, I read that with alarm, and even threat, at reading one of the School Committee members who says, "We can try as much as we can," and I'm quoting, "to find common ground, but at the end of the day, there's going to be a difference of opinion as to what should be done, and it's our job as elected officials to take the vote." It's not the job of future committees. We have been looking at this for years. We're the ones who have been studying the material. We have been listening, who have been listening. We owe it to our community to have a vote now, in October. That, to me, speaks of rushing this, and I'm not hearing the sense of this community is that we're on the same page. And that really worries me. I think a real discussion requires dropping pressure to hurry up and vote, especially when the votes are there. Again, that reeks of national politics. Supreme Court, as an example. We're better than this. I really think we are. I think that we can have a full discussion and we can all pull together. We can have differences of opinions. However, I also believe that we can come together with our differences and find the best way forward that we all can support. I think that's possible. And I think that that would be really bonding, and would build trust within our community, and I think that's what we need. So I request that we stop any major votes on expenditures or bids, or proceeding forward with any decisions about an artificial turf field until we have a better consensus within our community on a meaningful and inclusive way forwards. I also would not, I would like to see this particular school committee not take any vote until after the elections, because if people are rolling off, and then the new committee is, receives a vote which they then are stuck with, that is, that's not fair to them. It's not fair to the community. So thank you very much for listening.
Thank you, David. Michael, you are up next for public comment. Okay, I'm not hearing from Michael, so we'll move on to Sam. You are next.
I'm here.
Oh, sorry. Sorry, Sam, if you could pause. Michael has turned on his microphone.
Yeah, Michael Sussman, resident of Williamstown, member of Finance Committee, addressing a Williams gift as it involves decision-making concerning the playing fields. Over the five years that this process has been going on, whenever Williams gift was brought up in discussions, whether it be in Finance Committee, Select Board, public meeting, a third of the gift was always identified as being protected for capital growth, for capital expenses in the future. It seems like, like all of us in our own personal financing, that planning five to 10 years in the future is difficult. But Finance Committee and Town Finance people are concerned about five to 10 years from now. And I can tell you, as a member of Finance Committee, we have always viewed the expenses in the future concerning this building as being somewhat protected from the town's budget, town's taxing, because of the commitment that I feel the district has made that a third of the gift be in an endowment for future expenses. And yet, the last six to 12 months, that seems to be very low on the discussion at all. So when you're making a vote on where to go after public comment, I would like you to address your commitment for a third of Williams gift be protected for future capital expenses.
Thank you, Michael. Sam?
It's Elizabeth Smith, and I live at Caretaker Farm, 1216 Hancock Road in Williamstown, Massachusetts. I also sent a letter for public comment that wasn't read, but but all the other letters have, that have been questioning the advisability of building a turf field. That is my concern that I expressed in my letter. I feel the other people who express concern have adequately covered my deepest concerns. But I have a question now, and that is, in the bid for the artificial turf versus the natural turf field, was that bid only concerning the, for the football, or soccer, or lacrosse field? Or does that, what, how much money is being allocated to renew the other fields at Mount Greylock to creating a solid, viable, organic turf on the other fields at Mount Greylock?
Thank you, Sam. Typically during public comment, we take comment, we don't answer questions. We may get back to that during our discussion period, but thank you for the question and the comment, and I'm sorry if I receive emails and they're not specifically marked for public comment. We just sort of, we read those and digest them, so I apologize if your intention was to have that read.
I, that's fine. That explains it.
Is it worth noting that all of the emails that we received have been archived on that site that Joe mentioned? There's a folder that has emails, so your email is there, Elizabeth, along with everyone else who sent in comment.
Thank you, Carrie. Amy, you are next on public comment. If you could let us know what town you're a resident of and what agenda topic, please.
Hi there. Amy Jesewitz. I live on North Huzick in Williamstown. You know, I have, I've been following this just through what's in Ibirchers. Again, I don't necessarily have a huge stake in the school district, other than I'm a taxpayer. I don't have kids that go to the school, et cetera. But, you know, I think my biggest question, which you were able to answer, I had sent in a letter. I appreciate the little PowerPoint here that was put together. I think Joe did a nice job of going through it and explaining it, and it did answer some of my questions. But, you know, I fall on the side of, I really think this school district needs to put together a comprehensive plan, something that is a five or a 10-year. And I know that's hard to do, but just looking at this last slide that is up here about decision points, there's one, two, three, four, five, six, seven, eight, 10 things that are on there, and you know, it's, how are we going to get these all done? If, and I feel like there's, because there's this gift that's sitting over here on the side, there's, we feel like there's this pocket of money that's burning a hole in our pocket and we need to spend it. Trust me, I know what it's like to put a lot of work in, in this community, and spend years talking about something, and then it not happening when you want it to happen. But I really would like to see some sort of plan put together that's fiscally responsible, that knows what the expenditures are going to be and the maintenance. Do we have enough staff? You know, I agree that the athletic fields and the complex up there needs improvements, for sure, wholeheartedly. I don't have a horse in the race of whether it is turf or artificial, or grass or artificial turf. You know, I think that has been overtaken by the people's concern about the environmental impacts. But I think this whole conversation regarding the school and its needs comes down to, what can we pay for? And how do we maintain it? And I'm not sure that we have the answers to that yet, so that's my two cents, and I look forward to seeing, you know, how this goes. Thank you.
Thank you, Amy. Next up is Justin.
I'm sorry, did you mean Justine?
I apologize about that.
That's okay. I'm used to it.
Clearly, I need my glasses.
That's all right. Justine Berenger, 264 Sand Springs Road in Williamstown. I am speaking about the waxing facility for Nordic skiing. I will add in quickly, with regard to the fields, I, for what it's worth, I'm opposed to the artificial turf, but I'll get to the point that is held to my heart. I have a student who is on the Nordic ski team as well as the cross-country team. These teams are huge. Many, many students from grades seven through 12 are all on these teams. We've been waxing weekly in a private home. There, the facility was promised months and months and months ago, and it seems that it has been put off and put off. All the while, the consideration for spending exorbitant amounts of money on fields and lighting and public restrooms and everything else, when all this team is asking for is some space, essentially. And I feel my eyebrows went up a little bit, seeing that it may possibly be the expectation to require the team to raise funds for their own facility. And I'm just wondering if the other teams will be required to raise funds for maintenance of anything new that is built for them, or, you know, I've, I understand fundraising is fundamental in team sports, for uniforms, for trips, for things of that nature. But considering how much money is sitting here to be used by athletics, not by specific teams, or for the benefit of specific teams, and to let other teams go, I feel that the decision that- I feel that the decision that needs to be made is one that's equitable for all. I think that asking students to raise money for their own building is this side of absurd, all things considered. And I really feel that it should be considered how many students are on these two teams? And how much work and effort goes in? Not to say that other teams do not put effort, that's not my suggestion, but it, this, this constant for the, the request for space is not fair. And, you know, with the, the pot of money that everyone is looking to spend, I feel that the budget should be such, unlike, much like you would do in a household budget. For everyone need to be met. And if that means pulling the belt in, in one spot to provide for another spot, that, that's common sense way to do it as far as I'm concerned. But, you know, we, we are participating in cross country currently. We are planning to ski in the winter. And, you know, I think it's only fair that these kids have the proper space to do what they need to do to excel at their sport. So thank you for the time.
Thank you, Justine. And last for public comment, we have Stephanie Boyd.
Hi. Thank, thank you so much. And I must say, I'm like completely impressed with all the documents that have been pulled together last week. I, I just wish that we had pulled these documents together. I guess it's getting close to a year and a third ago. I, I got involved with this project about July or so last year, just before the bids came in. And I've since that time done a lot of research from talking to the grass manufacturers to doing financial analysis. I've put together a website. I've written numerous letters, asking numerous questions and have not really been able to sit down and have a serious conversation with the school committee or the phase two committee. Despite having been involved with a couple of initiatives, one where the former superintendent felt it was important enough to put together a financial advisory committee to try to look at the financial commitments before we committed further funds and that group was disbanded. Then Carrie, when she came on board, started looking at putting together an advisory committee. And then due to COVID and staff changes, we had to put that committee aside. And I thought we were going to start back up again this fall. The school, when they rejected the bid last September, had asked for the architect to do some more work and include grass fields and et cetera in the design. And I haven't seen whether that work has been done or not. So clearly, over the last year, we've all recognized that we're not ready to move ahead. And I'd like to point out a few of the questions, things that I have discovered in this process. One is, I really want to reiterate John Scablin's point that this is all about the kids. I mean, all of us know that that is the primary issue. And, but it's all about the kids can be in different reasons. One thing that I look at is we should be teaching our kids how to make decisions. I sat in a meeting last year when, at the school committee, and we were talking about these issues and we were saying it was all about the kids. And we had kids speaking about how they really needed an artificial turf. And sitting behind me at that meeting were two kids who played sports, but were also concerned about the environment and felt intimidated to speak. We need to figure out a way to allow all the voices and all the views feel comfortable speaking about this. This is the kind of thing that we should be teaching our kids. This is really hard business here. We're trying to compare financial impact, playability, environmental issues. And, you know, looking at all these apples and oranges, different personal opinions by members of the community and come out with some kind of consensus at the end. And a consensus isn't that everybody is fully on board. We have the right decision, but that we've come to a decision that we can all live with. And I think what's so difficult right now is that we just have this feeling that we're not listening to each other. And, and I know we can find a way to listen and respectfully disagree. But I don't think that's, that's where we are at the moment. So a couple of more points. I did some financial analysis using the numbers provided by the designer, Traverse. And not that I necessarily agree with those numbers. I think they're a little bit low on the turf side and high on the grass side. But despite that, and it turned out over the life of this field, we're going to be paying a 700 to 800,000 premium for artificial grass in terms of net present value. And if we look at using Brockville instead of the crumb rubber, then we can add another 70,000 to $130,000 onto that. So we're paying, I don't know, 800,000 to $900,000 premium for an artificial grass field over a natural grass field. So we have to ask ourselves, is that worth the benefit? And what else can we do with that money? So one thing we could do is pay for an irrigation system and a well that could service all the fields on the campus. We need more than one artificial turf field. The John Allen Field needs some major capital upgrades. So I don't have the answer to this, but we need to really sit down and figure out what the options are. And when we talk about playability, like one of the challenges that we have is that these artificial turf fields can be used like 3,000 hours a year. I mean, it's phenomenal. And a grass field can only be used 600, 700, 800 hours a year. So in terms of hours of use available, turf field wins. But the thing is, our kids are not available 3,000 hours a year. And they're all available at the same time. So we have multiple kids, multiple ages, multiple sports playing at the same time. They're not all going to fit on the artificial turf field. So the only way we're really going to service the needs of the kids is to have multiple fields. And perhaps the best way to do that is with grass. Granted, I have no way to solve the early spring need of an outdoor field. The other thing I really have a problem with is when we try to equate getting kids outside to getting them outside on a plastic grass field. What other ways can we get kids outside? Even with the plastic grass, we're not going to take them outside in the rain in the middle of the school day. So we're really just talking about the post bad weather days when you can't really use a grass field. There are trails up there. Maybe we should get the kids snowshoes. Like maybe there are other ways that we can get kids outside. I also do not think artificial turf is the solution for COVID. I've been trying to do some research on that this week and every site comes up with, this is how you disinfect your field with COVID situation. We can get kids outside without artificial turf and possibly we should be looking at other ways to deal with the COVID situation. I was reading an article last week about Adams where they can't play football. So they're looking at seven on seven teams of flag football. Maybe we need a whole different type of infrastructure at the school. And I wholeheartedly agree with, with Amy that we can't move ahead until we have a financial plan for, for all the needs of the school. And I think we need to invest in our grass fields and see what kind of progress we can make there before we make this huge financial and environmental commitment to artificial turf. And I would really welcome the opportunity to sit down with the phase two committee or the school committee, whoever's going to work on this in the future, and try to find a way that we can present all the pros and cons so that our community as a whole can make an informed decision. And thank you very much for all your work. And especially thank you to whoever put together all the materials in the last, in the last week or so in one place. That's going to be a good help in the future.
Thank you, Stephanie. Okay, that concludes public comment. Rob, did you?
I just wanted to mention that it was a combination of the work of, of Joe and Gil Bergeron and Stacy, who, who basically did our presentation today, put together the entire website. And they've been working tirelessly on it for the past week.
Thank you. Okay, our next agenda item is discussion and possible vote regarding direction and use of funds for the Mount Greylock Regional School Capital Gift. Carrie?
I have a question for Joe. We talked about the possibility of getting in touch with Traverse and seeing if there were, if any bid documents had been worked on, if there was any progress made on the school committee vote to, you know, start with the compliance and then add alternates for the grass field and the turf field and the track. So Joe, were you able to get in touch with Traverse? Or do you have any information about where we're, where we are with that?
I am in touch with Traverse. The work that they have done thus far is, is what is up on the website. So they, they have the RFP that went out last fall. They have the value engineering modifying that RFP so that it could go out again in a different way is something that they're perfectly willing to do. I'm not sure how they will quote that work, what, what kind of additional cost they will afford for it. The other thing to note is that the estimates that they provided for both grass and turf earlier last year were their estimates. So then, you know, within that topic, when people ask about getting more grass numbers, we can get more estimates from other people. But, you know, really it doesn't matter until you get bids that are actual contractors saying, I'm willing to do the work for a certain amount. So that's, that's where we stand in terms of that, that vein of conversation, Joe.
And I have one more question, Christine. Is that okay? And I apologize for the ringing. Okay, sorry. The other issue is water. And I believe there have been discussions about the, so the 50,000 we know includes water and irrigation for the new grass field. That was the estimate. And I'm not sure what it came back for. Oh, because we didn't, we haven't bid it. So we don't know what that would actually cost to bid. But we also don't know what it would cost to provide water, proper irrigation and drainage for the rest of our fields or even one or two more of our fields. Is that correct?
Members of the phase two subcommittee might have more detail there, but from what I know, we know that we would need to either renew old wells or drill new wells. I'm not sure to what extent that has been a part of the, of the components that went out in the RFP last year. And then irrigation would also involve then running the plumbing, the pipes out to the destinations and having the equipment necessary. I do not believe that was an integral part of the RFP last fall, but I am not sure of that, to be honest right now.
Thanks.
Al? You're on mute, Al.
I guess we have an offer. I, I'll talk later about money if you want to talk about, and I'll tell you how much it's going to cost individual taxpayers, et cetera. I'll be happy to do those numbers for you. But just a question right off the bat about not making a decision now and waiting. If that was the case, you wouldn't have a superintendent right now. We could have made the case that, well, we have a new, a new committee coming in and let's wait. The fact remains is that this was put on our agenda item and it's our responsibility as a school committee to make that decision and not to push it down the road. So just that, this, this procedural stuff, we haven't gotten to the other stuff. The next school committee just, I just wrote down a couple of things that that's going to be on their platter. They have to deal with the pandemic, that, because that isn't finalized. They're going to have to deal with staffing. They're going to have to deal with union contracts that are coming up. They're going to have to deal with any litigations that are still left over from, from the original building. They're going to have to develop all new protocols for many things that are coming in with the new region. They're going to have to, have to do, deal with the, the school community packet issue. They have to deal with, with the 500 pound driller in the room flipping starting times of elementary and high school, which is a big hot, hot topic, Adam. They're going to have to deal with that. They're going to have to deal with ADD. They're going to have ADA. They're going to have to deal with Title IX. And they're going to get, whether they like it or not, they're going to get involved in a diversity conference issue with, at Williamstown. And they're going to get involved with the project. And on top of that, we're asking them to now get involved with the art of the turf issue. So they're going to have enough on their hands. I think if we can take that away from them, make a decision, go forward, and they can deal with those. And that's only what I did. I'm sure that we can, they're going to come with other things. But that's, just to clear it up, that's why we decided to make, I decided to make a decision now. Later on, if you want to talk about other issues specifically, I'll be happy to talk about those.
You're on mute.
Sorry, unmuted. Okay, I'm having issues with my computer. Okay. Just to briefly address, you know, some of the issues about this being rushed. As the timeline shows, we've been discussing this gift for many years. Unlike many school committee meetings where the school committee only has public comment at the beginning, at the phase two subcommittee meetings for years, we have had full public participation at the table with people able to provide input. I agree, we could have done more, but we've also done a tremendous amount. We've already had a public forum. The phase two committee meetings have had input from the community. At the end of the day, this is going to be an issue, as was remarked with the building project, with regionalization, where there will be differences of opinion of what is the best steps forward. And as Al said, it's our job at the end of the day to make decisions. We've been talking about having a vote on this since at least January of this year before the pandemic started. And so this is, you know, again, however we decide, however we weigh the information, we have collected the information for a long period of time. This is not something that's being rushed. We have listened to the community. We have adjusted what we're doing based on that. You know, it may look that way, but we have been paying attention for a long period of time.
Ally?
Thanks. Just to weigh in on the, on the, the process discussion. Because I, I do think it's important that we address that first before we can really dive into some of the, the details on this. First of all, thanks to Joe for the really clear presentation. I think there seems to be a lot of misinformation circulating in the community. So that was really helpful for giving us a common ground to start from. My term started two years ago. And we are not far from where we were at that point. And we have had years of discussion, not just we, meaning me too, the, the committee, the subcommittee, the folks who've been involved in the spending on the capital gift. I've had years of discussion to get to where we are now. So I'm, I'm a little confused about the comments that this is being rushed into a vote. I have notes I made to myself from over a year ago on what I would, on, to, to, to talk about my thinking on a field vote. And so the, I mean, there's been hundreds of hours spent in collectively and in meetings, on research, in discussion amongst ourselves, with the community, with the companies who would be in, you know, we would be working with, with other companies on organic management. We had the community forum last summer. Smaller independent meetings with community members. And, and I, I hope this is apparent in the years of minutes and the documents so, so kindly gathered and organized by Stacy and Joe. And what I've seen over the past two years is that this committee and the subcommittee have listened really hard to this community feedback. We had comparisons done between turf and grass outlining the pros and cons and the different options. We went through the subcommittee, did the value engineering to try to look at ways we could reduce the costs. did the value engineering to try to look at ways we could reduce the costs. There were discussions with the Organic Turf Management Company who helped build out a plan for improved management of John Allen Field. We have that new maintenance plan, which is fantastic. And I think most notably, this discussion started with talk about a turf field being chrome rubber. And because of the community concern with chrome rubber, the Phase Two Subcommittee switched to an alternative and innovative infill that eliminates many of the concerns that were raised. Some of the most significant concerns, at least in terms of environmental impact, health injury. And, and so I'm, it's the, the divisiveness in the community around this, I feel is really, it's, it's disappointing. Especially because I think so many of the comments that we receive don't fully reflect the facts and the discussion to date and, and it would have been great to have all of our minutes posted online years ago, but I, I think that's not to say that those discussions didn't happen and that those are informing the point of view that we all have today. And I also want to note that I think that from the, the past discussions that we've had and, and when we have heard from students and other community members, they're, not everybody showed up today, which is totally understandable. And I think we just need to make sure that we're aware. Or taking that into consideration that, I mean, this seems like it's being framed to be a school committee versus the community issue. And I, I really don't think that's a reflection of the reality. I, this, I, I don't, I'm very confused about how this seems like a rushed vote. We, we should and could have done this a long time ago, but we've been trying to be responsive, not only to community feedback, but also other, you know, more serious issues that needed to be dealt with. So that's just my thoughts on the process.
Jamie, you have your hand up?
Yeah, I think right now I have, I have three comments that I'd like to make, maybe four, five. They're all pretty short. One is to really echo the appreciation for Joe and Stacy and also for Carrie and her efforts in the past few months to pull information together and kind of collect it in one, one place. I think it's incredibly helpful. And I know that a lot of work went into that in a very short period of time and I appreciate it. They've done, it's been a huge service for the community. I think the second comment is, I really appreciate all the time people have taken in the last week or week and a half to reach out to the school committee and express their preferences and their concerns and to engage in the process. I think that speaks highly of the community and the level of engagement there. And then on the issue of this being rushed, I feel that actually, I think that the way that this has unfolded in the last couple of weeks seems pretty unusual. And I've, I've, no, I've, I've said and I have felt that we need to, as a community, to kind of make forward progress and have this, you know, a kind of issue settled. But I'm also increasingly uncomfortable that we were trying to, to to do a lot in a week and a half. We're meeting at, you know, we started a meeting at noon on a Friday. And it's now 1:37. I know, you know, I've got afternoon meetings that I haven't been able to reschedule. So this is, this is an unusual process. It feels rushed to me. And the fact of the matter is, this is my next comment, is there's no vote we're ready to take today that can't be undone by the school committee that's constituted in November. We're not there yet. We're not there. We do not have a bid to accept a contract to, to approve. There's no allocation that we can do right now. They can't be undone by the next school committee that's constituted in November. So I'm, and then my final comment for right now is that we do have a vote that we took in September of 2019 about how we should approach the bidding on this project. It's still, it hasn't been rescinded, still there. We have a proposal that when we go out to bid next, we have an RFP for the base project being code improvements. We have a, then a series of, of different alternates, including an artificial turf field, a natural grass field and a track. Three different add-ons to the base project. We don't have, as, as Joe mentioned earlier, in response to Carrie's questions, we don't have plans yet that are ready to go out to bid, but we had a five to two vote over a year ago about what direction we should head with that. Nothing's really changed since then. I think there were a couple of comments or a couple of, not comments, a couple of meetings of the Phase Two Subcommittee before things started to get, you know, reorganized and things bounced around to different subcommittees and committees. But that's where we were a year ago and it's not a bad place to think about where we head from now. So I'll, I'll be quiet now. Those are my initial thoughts.
Thank you, Jamie. Carrie?
So I'd also like to speak about the process moving forward, since we do have only about 20 minutes left. I agree, there is a vote on the table and I would suggest that we consider moving forward in getting those bid documents. It's going to cost some money and I think that's frustrating for people who don't want to spend more money on plans, but we said we were going to do it as a committee. I wasn't even on the committee at that point. It's a little bit of a mystery to me. I only joined in May, so I don't know why things didn't move forward at that point. It doesn't really matter, but you know, unless there is an overriding vote to do something else, I think it still makes sense to request bid documents for the RFP as it was laid out in that committee vote. So that's what I would suggest. I don't know if you want a motion to, to do that, or if you want to wait and have more discussion.
In the interest of time, I think a motion would make sense.
Okay. Jamie, do you want to make it or?
Okay, question.
Um, can, can they finish their conversation about the motion and then?
Oh, I'm sorry.
I mean, I think it's from my perspective, we have, we have the, we have that motion.
Well, you have the vote, right? But was it specifically to get the documents?
I mean, I think that, that was what the, 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 the vote from 2019, as I understand it, was to charge, you know, the Phase Two Committee to develop bid documents to go out to bid in that kind of base with three different ad alternatives model. I think that that's, I don't, I don't know where we are after that. Like if, if the committee in its work with, with Traverse developed the specs for the different components, you know, or talked through what, what the program for those different components would look like. I just don't, you know, I don't know where things were in those conversations. But I think it's, I'm not sure that we need a vote as much as a, you know, an idea of, okay, we need to reconstitute some, or designate, you know, a committee to pick up the ball where it was left. You know, in September of 2019 to start moving things forward. And, and I honestly, I, I'm really sympathetic to on both sides, the, the concerns that have been raised. One, that we've spent five years on this project and it's time to move forward. Two, that people feel like the process as it has happened to date, hasn't generated answers to their questions. And that opportunities for further kind of engagement on their questions might be, might help create some sort of consensus, if not agreement on what the outcome is, consensus that the process involved an opportunity to share their concerns and have it be, have them be heard and responded to. I don't know that we need to vote something right now. We need to figure out what the next step is, but that's just my take.
Al.
Yes, we do need a vote. First of all, I'm rushing to, to get things done. We have all been to town meetings. We have all been there when there were a lot of discussions. Finally, someone with a moderator says, I called a question. The question is called, we take a vote. I'm sure when that happens, there are people in the audience who feel disenfranchised. They feel that they didn't have a chance to speak. They feel that their questions weren't all answered. And in truth, they're correct. But it happens at every town meeting all the time. We have to move forward. I disagree with taking a vote on, on procedures. I believe if we make a motion, we should take a vote on yes or no, accepting the recommendation of the original Phase Two Subcommittee about installing a Brockville field. That's the vote that's on the floor. That's I would make, that, 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 that's, I think that that's the opinion we should be doing. Make that vote, go into Brockville. I don't want to get to, if you wanted to talk about mon, mon, numbers, and I could talk forever about numbers. Okay, that's the vote. If we're going to make a motion, that's the motion we should make. Put it to rest and move forward. We talk procedure entirely too much. Five years. I didn't spend this much time in college.
So Al, I think the motion that, that you're interested in is about the value engineering documents from the Phase Two recommendation with, using Brockville. Right? Because that's, those are the documents.
I'm trying to simplify.
Right.
I will say one last thing. I, and I thank Christine. I wrote Christine an email. She said, well, you should really thank Stacy on this about the packet that they developed. It was incredible. When I was reading through the packet, I said, oh yeah, I remember that. Oh yeah. All the work that was done. I think the thing that is on the table, are we going to have a Brockville turf field or are we going to not? Yes or no? If the answer is no to that, then we can play, then we can do all the other stuff. If the answer is yes to that, then we can move forward. I've, and I've always felt, because I'm on the sub, to, uh, subcommittee, I vote, move forward, accept the recommendation that we've been working on for five years for Phase Two Committee and let's go. But if you guys want to do something else?
Well, are you making a motion to do that?
Sure, I'll make a motion that we accept. I'm sorry, I, I, I'll let Steve speak before I make a motion.
You're on mute, Steve.
You've been having audio issues. So I, I want to just bring up a point that Al made at a previous meeting about how much money of the gift we're using for study after study after study. And rather than having add-ons, we're having more and more studies. This is one of the things that has, you know, really solidified my support in, and supported and moved me to, we need to get this done. We could have had this vote and we could have had these discussions in January, in February, in March. This is a bit on the school committee, but we have assembled the information. We've been looking at it. As has been said, if we delay this, we're going to then reset with a whole new group of people reading everything again. We have done the research. This was a job. Our job was to look at this stuff. It's been assembled. We started the school year with our children unable to come in for in-person instruction, but able to use the fields for practices. As Carrie said, she did an outstanding job at the last meeting. There's pros and cons on both sides of this as to, should we have a vote now or should we wait for the new committee? And she did a great job of summarizing both views. But one thing she said really struck, struck me. And what she said was that if playability is your top issue, then it's a no brainer. And for me, that is the top issue right now. You know, trying to get something that's directly affecting our kids, you know, from the Williams College gift and, you know, right now trying to maximize how many hours they can be out there. I know we had, do we have Lindsay and Tim here able to talk about the fields? I thought we were going to hear from them.
I'll just offer that, that Tim shared all that he had with me, but Lindsay is here. I, I see Lindsay waving right now.
Okay.
So I, I have to say, I, before we, if I could, I'm confused. Because we did as a committee reject the bids that came in and we did as a committee agree to go back out to bid with the natural grass option. And after that time, we started to get feedback. We, at some point, had started talking about having an open forum and then school closed. And this really lost a lot of steam for obvious reasons. And so I'm confused and, and do feel quite rushed about saying we're voting purely on Brockville because we're not. That wasn't, we, we rejected a bid and we said we're going to go back out to bid and we haven't seen those documents to go back out to bid. That's to me, like, we really do need to establish what our next steps are. And I don't think it's a, a vote on Brockville. But that's, did you want to add something?
Yeah, I was just going to add that, you know, we could have done a lot of this stuff earlier. There were requests to have votes on the field and discussions on the field going back to January and February. And we, we sadly, as a committee chose not to have the forums and not to have the votes. But there were agenda requests for this discussion a long time ago.
Jamie?
Yeah, I, I just want to, I, I'm with you, Christina. We, we had a vote on how we were going to do that. We did not develop the documents to implement how that approach would work. And, and I'm really uncomfortable with the idea that we're going to now say, no, just because as a committee, we didn't implement the plan we agreed on a year ago, that we're going to, that we're somehow going to take a, a different vote today that isn't really going to be binding in the long term. Like this idea that we're going to take this off the plate for the, the school committee that's reconstituted, constituted in November is, isn't really accurate. I mean, I mean, the, the process isn't going to get resolved between today and election day. You, there are still going to be bid documents that are going to need to be done. There, there's still going to need to be posted. We're still going to need to receive and open and review the bids. There's still going to need to be a vote on whether to spend the money to accept a bid and, and the contract that's associated with it. It, we are not putting this issue to bed tonight, today, in the next eight minutes or 20 minutes or 38 minutes, where, how long we spend doing it. It's not going to, it's not going to resolve the issue and take it off the plate for the next school committee. It just seems like a very suddenly urgent shift of gears from the approach that five members of this school committee approved a year ago, which was we should solicit proposals. which was, we should solicit proposals for one base package and three different ad alternates. And review what comes in and make an informed decision about which path forward makes the most sense for the school committee. We don't have the numbers on the, the, from formal, from formal bids right now.
Al?
All right, we do have the numbers. I, I, I know how you keep saying that, Jamie. We do have the numbers.
Because why, Al? Here's why, here's why it keeps being that, because we do not have...
I didn't interrupt you.
I'm gonna just answer the question. We do not have a proposal for what it would cost to build a natural grass field. That's why.
Excuse me, excuse me. We do have numbers. We, we have, we have, we have tons of numbers. And I'm even gonna talk about what we're on the turn, and I want to talk about what we're traverse. And we, this is, this is, this is the typical moving of the goal, goal coast. And if we get out, we spend another $30,000, okay? Just to get another survey done. And, and six weeks from now, we come in with this new survey and say, yeah, but you know what? You didn't include in that big, blah, 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 blah. So then we've got another bit. And that's what has been happening for the last five years. We have all the numbers we have to have. I wanted to, I, I don't want to take time because, about, we're talking about money and what it costs. But if we wanted to take the time, I could tell you what it would cost a typical Lanesboro, uh, homeowner, if we had to, uh, get $600,000 for renewal of a, of a Brockfield, uh, field, what it would cost in 10 years. I could tell you what it would cost every year for every, every taxpayer, okay? We don't, I don't, if you want to, we can go through all those numbers. The fact remains, we have that. We have to stop. We have to hold the question.
Could I just say, we have the estimate that Traverse gave, but we don't have a bid document for a field. And that's the difference.
My feeling, my feeling is that, this is like, this is like going, this is like going Christmas shopping with the grandmother. Okay? You're gonna spend what you're gonna spend. We have the money. We have 3.5, whatever number we have. If we vote that we're gonna put a field in, we're not putting in, we're putting in a school project and a community resource. I hear from Williamstown people all the times, they don't have enough community resources. We're giving an incredible grift, gift to not only the school, but the community as a whole. And our position is, let's do another study on that.
Steve?
Just on this point, we can keep looking at different options. And I know in the past, we were looking at all the different things. To me, you know, seeing our kids indoors for so long, the playability issue is becoming more and more important to me. And that's why, you know, for me, I am comfortable going forward with what I believe Al is proposing, because for me, that is the key issue. Thank you.
I feel like it's disingenuous to go back on a vote that was made in September.
I would like to move, Christina, that we proceed with, um, the bid documents as voted in September of 2019.
Carrie has made a motion. Do I have a second?
Carrie, could you just repeat that? I, I need to get it for the minutes.
A motion that we proceed with the bid documents as voted in September 2019. The problem, of course, is that we don't have a Phase Two Subcommittee. So we need a new vote, right? We need a new vote that we're not sending this to the Phase Two Subcommittee. All I'm saying is that we proceed with the bid documents and we get that process going and work, you know, this is not part of the motion. We'll work with the administration, um, in, in, um, you know, the, the actual formalizing of the plan.
Technically speaking, the Phase Two Subcommittee morphed into the Finance Committee.
Right.
So the Finance Committee.
The documents and work with the, um, administration.
I will second that motion. Any discussion?
I think we still wanted to hear from Lindsay, though.
See Ally's hand, though, if you want Ally to go first.
No, actually, Lindsay, I'd love to hear from you first.
Um, there's been so much said, and also, I want to reiterate a huge thank you to Joe and Stacy for putting that presentation together. It was good to, to see it summarized. Some of this, from my side of things, I think I've been here for 12 years. And while this main discussion has been the last two years, it's still been a discussion from 12 years ago. So I think it's one that's gonna keep coming back over and over and over again. With regard to the vote that you're currently taking, just to put out there, I believe one of the concerns with that and why it didn't happen, and unfortunately, we'd have to go back in and look at notes, is the business manager at the time let us know that the, the ad alternates can only happen in a certain order. So the possibility of creating a bid with a, do you do the synthetic turf with an alternate of grass? But then if you had anything after that, or the other way, you have to, you can't accept anything beyond the first or the second. So if you say no to one, you can't do anything beyond that. So if a track or something else was in it. So that's where that got really confused. And I don't know if people are still in contact with Andrea. And Joe, I'm sure knows just as much about this and might be able to check.
Jamie, I think you had some history on this, didn't you?
Well, no, I was gonna say, that's really interesting, because I went back through the minutes from those committee meetings, those Phase Two Subcommittee meetings from, you know, October and December of 2019, and didn't think of any, didn't see the discussion of that issue. But if, if that's an interesting thing to be, to explore, and whether there's, um, you know, the possibility to do a, a, to structure in a different way to try to develop more concrete numbers on...
Right, I mean, basically, what we're looking for is, you know, the cost to, to meet compliance. And then, the, then a grass, a synthetic turf with Brockville and a track. Right? So we want the array of options after, we don't want them in an order. We want to be able to, you know, pick and choose. So we need to structure it in a way that, that would enable that to happen in order to be true to the vote that was taken in September.
I'll let you figure that. I just wanted to make people aware of that that's one of the, the concerns that got raised then. I honestly think you have a whole lot of decisions and discussions in front of you. So it was interesting hearing the perspectives of everyone. So just briefly touching on what I thought were the three main aspects. Nordic ski, they need a place to wax. But to add to the conversation, um, something that might not have come out in the emails that were received. We, the coaches did the, for the most part, their own waxing last year, because a new regulation got put into place saying that students were not allowed to wax skis without supervision. And yet, our school lawyer said, due to liability reasons, which completely makes sense, they could not wax on an uninsured property off campus. So last year, they had basically no options. And most of the coaches and the people that lived near that house did the waxing themselves, which is not our goal, both in educational athletics and liability reasons. So I think the importance of that Nordic ski building that will need to be used in other seasons, because it obviously can't be just a space for, for one team, is definitely important. A lot of our, this discussion I heard today was based on the natural turf versus synthetic turf. Um, and I think a portion of the project that doesn't get talked about enough is the ADA assessability, assessability and the, the need for the Title IX compliance. To me, that's something we can't, we shouldn't be waiting on any longer. So while many discussions can still happen, I think there's a deadline on, on when some of that has to happen. And I think that needs to be one of the priorities, is making sure people can get to the field safely and making sure our softball field meets our baseball field that parents continue to, to put money into. So that definitely has to be, um, discussed. I don't have the certifications to speak on some of the concerns being raised in the past to a synthetic turf. And, but, but I do feel we've heard many people that are qualified speak on that. What I can say is the option to use a synthetic field during the munch with our natural grass field are not playable due to water or because they would incur damage to play on, would be beneficial to students. And as I've heard a few times, that's who we should be thinking about here. So I believe the ability to use a synthetic turf field would benefit the students at Mount Greylock, not just the ones that would typically play on that space, but those during PE and those that would be able to practice on that space, even if there weren't their competition, um, field. We obviously couldn't have predicted our current situation. But I think it's definitely a time that having students outdoors instead of packed in a gym needs to be a priority. Hopefully, our situation improves. An outdoor option, to me, in the future, is still gonna be preferable to many of our families, um, as we move forward and learn from the past few months. We want students outside during PE class. This will provide more time to do that. I believe Brian Gill spoke last year of seven or eight additional weeks of time that PE, obviously, if the air conditions are good enough, uh, could be outside. There's a typical time for almost three weeks in the spring where we pack 50 to 60 kids in a gym for four hours, um, to prepare for their spring season. That's not something we want to be doing. So providing a space for them to be outside, um, safely, to me, is important. We would have definitely, you've heard me speak about the, the February, March, April possibility of a soccer and a football season. In Berkshire County, we know that's not really a possibility, but have had, if we had a synthetic, synthetic field, that might have been a possibility. And some things in the future may happen that, that will occur again. And I think, basically, I think this conversation has happened for at least nine years, three years, and, and with this committee. I think it's gonna be, continue to be a conversation over and over and over again. Because due to the weather up here and the field conditions in Berkshire County, a synthetic turf field will always be beneficial for playability reasons. If you have any specific questions, I can try to answer. I know Joe put together the numbers that I had said and already summarized. I think did a fantastic job of summarizing what had been done.
Carrie?
Yeah, so I'll just say, I agree, and several other people have also stated at pre, pre, sorry, previous meetings, that we need to get the compliance. We need to get ADA and Title IX done. And we don't want to put that off. And so that's the purpose for sending that out to bid. You know, what is that gonna cost to, to just do that? And then, we need to take more time on this. We can do that. But that is our deadline, and that is a reason why this needs to be voted on and move forward. I would like to, you know, I think we can resolve without costing much money, some of the concern by putting the turf and the, the, um, grass field out to bid. We know we need to put the value engineered, um, you know, we know, we've had some value engineering done. And so that should be included in the bid package. And there's a lot of interest in the track. So I would really like us to be, and I don't know how realistic that is. I don't know enough about the bid process and how to structure it. So that may be an issue. But, you know, it would be really nice to be able to say, we're gonna get the compliance done, ADA and Title IX. And then we're gonna make some, um, informed decisions about grass, synthetic, and track. And by the way, I looked up, you know, LEED compliance, because I was a little, you know, with the building project, we were very concerned about LEED. And I was wondering, you know, is this gonna be an issue moving forward? And in fact, the LEED program gives points for use of synthetic turf, because it is more responsible in terms of water usage. Right? So there's a lot to be said for, you know, the conservation of water, incredibly important environmentally. So I am, I'm not anti-synthetic turf. And I'm not anti-organic field. I think both have challenges and, and issues. And I, like many other folks, would just like a little bit more information. So... Compliance, we gotta do that.
Ally?
Um, I just don't want to lose sight of the fact that the Phase Two Subcommittee, has recommended a Brockville turf because of their, the research that they have done, um, that concluded that natural grass does not work for the needs of the school. Um, so we're, we're talking about going back out to bid for something that, that is not going to resolve a lot of the issues that we're facing. You know, I mean, as Lindsay said, this conversation's been happening, I guess, for over a decade. And it's costly. And I'm concerned that getting another bid, or getting a bid that, I mean, we, clearly, we need a bid, um, to move forward. But going back to bid on, on grass is also not, it's not going to resolve this conversation. And I think when we had that last vote, I was certainly under the impression that, um, that, that what we had talked about would be a matter of months and not years. And I, I'm concerned that it's not, I mean, it's, it's, it's not an, I, I don't think it's a necessary use of funds. I think it's, um, going to be more costly and, and not efficient to do a piecemeal approach moving forward, where we, we try just to address the compliance issues with ADA and Title IX, and, and then try to build in other things. I, I think there... We, based on the work that has been done, and, and even the estimates, not the official numbers from a contractor, but we have estimates for the cost of a grass field. And we also know that it's going to leave us with, with some issues that will be unaddressed. And so I'm, I'm struggling a little bit with going back to leaving that, the grass versus Brockville conversation, to have that next step be, oh, we need to put it back out to bid, to put both things back out to bid. Because I'm not sure that that helps move the conversation enough to justify the use of the, or to justify the expense.
Steve?
So I, I, I agree with Ally on this. I, I think from what we've been hearing is grass just doesn't meet the needs of our community as well as artificial turf does, when you look at playability. And for that reason, I am just hesitant to keep, you know, pushing things back, pushing things back, doing more studies, doing bids, and using the capital gift not for things that are directly going to impact our students, but for more bids and more analysis. We've done the analysis. And I think the numbers say that, you know, with playability as the top issue, artificial turf is the way to go. I think we should go forward with a value engineered bid, including a track as the top priority. And I'm willing to make a motion on that.
Okay, we currently have a motion that's been moved and seconded. Do we have any further discussion on that motion? Jamie?
Just to comment on the motion that was moved and seconded. So it was, it was, um, moved that we proceed with the bid documents that were approved in September of 2019. But we actually didn't have bid documents approved. We had a kind of bidding approach, um, that was approved. So if we're gonna make this, vote on this motion, I would suggest it be amended to, um, change documents to approach.
So...
The bid approach was faulty also. So I'm gonna withdraw the motion because we've been told, thank you, Lindsay, for the information. The bid approach, um, needs to be, you get the gist. The bid approach needs to be, you get the gist of what I was, what I was, you know, and I've said it again. My motion would be for compliance and then being able to choose the other things. But there's another motion that's coming up as well.
Yeah, no, okay.
So that motion has been.
I'd like to make a comment.
Sorry, Dave, unfortunately, this isn't a public forum. So we can only take public comment during the public comment period.
Yeah, but I did want to, I did want to just make one very, very brief comment.
You can't because that doesn't follow our protocol.
Okay.
Sorry.
Can we get some administrative opinions here? Dr. Putnam, I don't know if Dr. McCandless is still on the line. If the motion that's going to come before us next is on the turf field as it was value engineered with Brockville with the track as an ad alternate. You know, from what you know of either use of turf fields or the district does it, you know. Is there anyone who wants to offer an opinion who hasn't done that already from the administration?
I'm going to defer to Joe to begin on this one. And Ms. Green, this is Jake McCandless for everybody, the incoming superintendent here in the next couple of weeks. I too appreciate reading through the volumes of material that we received yesterday. I am so far from an expert on artificial surface fields. You know, I, like all of you, remain really committed to making sure that students now and students ten years from now and twenty years from now have the facilities that they want and need to fully engage in their high school experience. The Title IX and ADA compliance is, I know there is, seems to be a couple of years still out there on that. That's crucial because that really speaks to the usability of the community that is, that makes school even possible. I would not want to weigh in on any of your processes so far or any of that or what the right answer is because I simply don't know enough at this point to do that. I apologize.
So from a process perspective, I think one question was whether or not you can have an RFP go out that has ad alternates that, as opposed to being like layers of an onion, instead can be like a buffet where I pick this ad alternate, but I reject that one and I pick this other one. I fully agree with the past assessment that typically or always people put out an RFP and the ad alternates are chosen in succession as opposed to picking and choosing. I have not found a legal reason yet to not do the buffet type. But I've already put in calls to all the right government sources to try to get a definitive opinion on it. It's definitely not a standard way that procurement is done. So I can't speak either way at the moment.
Jamie?
Yeah, this is just off the top of my head, but it seems like you could actually bid out two projects to the extent that they're separate and just solve that too, right? You could do a co-compliance with base package with an alternate for natural grass field and an alternate for the synthetic field as one project. And you can put a bid out for the track as a separate project. And then you'd get to the same place to kind of do an end run along this kind of thing. So I do think that there's probably a way to figure out how to get numbers that are more concrete than estimates. And I think that would go a long way to solving the political problem we have right now, which is that the large section of the community in Williamstown has expressed a lack of trust in how we've proceeded so far. And I think that's a challenge. And I, my concern of this has been primarily financial. I'm not anti-artificial turf necessarily, not anti-natural grass necessarily. I'm on this committee for a short time. I just think as a matter of both governments and financial management, it's a good idea to get harder numbers before we make a decision.
Do you want them? Do you want to take the time to do that now to talk about tax rates? To talk about individual financial obligations? If you want to take the time right now, I'd be happy to do that. I'd be happy to go through what the tax rate in Lanesboro is, how it would cost, what it would cost if we had have come up with $600,000 for ten years now. Do we really want to go through all of that right now? When we have, we already know what all those numbers are? I thought, I thought Ally's point was well taken. We're going to spend a lot of money, in my opinion, going to spend a lot of money to go out to do a study to get a solution that doesn't solve the problem. Who runs a railroad like that? We're going to vote on a solution that doesn't solve a problem? Grass does not solve our problem. I don't know what else I want to say. Five years we've been talking about this. It doesn't solve the problem.
Carrie?
Yeah, Al, I really do understand what you're saying. It assumes that we all agree on what the problem is. And the Phase Two Committee has committed to that being the problem that needs to be solved. But of course, it raises other problems. And there are other problems that need to be solved as well, such as, you know, our other fields, which still don't have water. So I'm just saying, you're right. That is the only solution to that particular problem.
I will go into, can I say one last? I don't, you can time me, two minutes. Eight years ago, eight years ago, when I was chairman, when I was chair of the Finance Committee, our Paul Seeler, town administrator came to us and said, holy cow, we just lost the Bateman hearing for the mall. Oh, wow, what are you going to do? Not only did we lose this one, but it was retroactive for two years. That's what I told him, two years retroactive. What are we going to do? We're going to have to lay off police officers. We're going to have to lay off teachers. We're going to, all this stuff we're all worried about. But we didn't panic, we planned. And what did we do? We did little things. We faced a police cruiser every thirty, instead of every thirty-six months, every forty months. Okay? We cut grass every twelve days, rather every seven days. We did three summer projects instead of five summer projects. Fast forward eight years later. No teacher has been laid off in Lanesboro. No police officer has been laid off in Lanesboro. We built a new high school, probably going to build a police station, and we load our tax rate. The moral of the story is, is that when you plan, you can decide long-term projects. You can turn capital expenditures. For those people that are concerned about that, I'll tell you two minutes. Just as the collapse of the mall didn't bankrupt Lanesboro, I can say, whatever authority I have, putting in a Brockville field will not bankrupt either Lanesboro or Williamstown. And if you want specific, I can really do specific numbers of what it would cost per family. That's all I have to say. Can we move forward? I think we should start digging a hole tomorrow.
Joe?
So I just spoke with our legal counsel, and I already had left the message with the Inspector General's office for an official opinion from them. We could certainly handle it the way Jamie had suggested, which would be two RFPs going out simultaneously. One related to a base package of Title IX and ADA compliance with an alternate for grass. And the other one with the base package for Title IX and ADA compliance and then add alternate for turf. And then have the track be on top of each of those. We can definitely do it that way. Whether we can do it as a series of ad alternates, and we encourage people to bid on all of them. Our counsel said that they had not seen it done, but they didn't see any reason why we necessarily couldn't, but that we should get a determination from the Inspector General's office that administers the 30B laws before we would go forward with it.
I like the two bid packages because then specialists in natural grass can bid on that and specialists in synthetic can bid on those. And, you know, then we're at least getting the information that the community has asked for. And we're just, you know, it's one extra bid document and another bid process. It means more work for people. But it will satisfy the need that has been expressed over and over and over again. And these are our constituents. We need to listen to the concerns of the community as well as to the folks who have been doing the work, right? I've really been trying very hard to stay open-minded. And it's been driving, you know, people who have talked to me about this crazy because, you know, I'm not committing to one or the other. And I have friends who are very passionate about synthetic turf. And I have friends who are very passionate about natural grass. And I would really like to be able to see, you know, the information that's been requested.
Joe?
Just to continue to throw wrenches into the works. Perkins Eastman had supplied on November nineteenth of last year a document to the district that states that to develop a grass field designed suitable for rebidding, they had quoted the district at that point in time of $42,150 price tag for that process.
To bid grass?
I don't know if anyone remembers this, but I recall a community group agreeing to fundraise in order to have that paid for. I really remember that, like, discussion happening. They didn't know if they could do it, but it was something they offered. It was something, because, you know, that whole reaching into the piggy bank argument came up. So just to add further wrenches.
And we know that we have to rebid the synthetic anyway with the value engineering and the Brockville and the ad alternate of the track. I mean, we know that has to be rebid. So that's probably going to cost something equivalent, do we think, or no?
It looks as though, from my inspection of this, about half of the overall cost is related to getting the construction documents down to the level of detail that is required for the grass bid to go out or for the grass RFP to go out. The value engineering and the rebid is a relatively small chunk, then around $10,000. And then there are additional engineering services that are indicated that are not specified as whether they're specifically related to graphs or related to incorporating value engineering into documentation.
Steve?
And this is why, if it's possible for the committee with all the evidence and all the studies that have been gathered, collected, and read to make a decision between artificial turf and natural grass, it would be advantageous to do that and be able to go forward. If the committee cannot do that, then we are going to be spending more money on more studies and less add-ons. Or raise the, I'll leave it at that.
Something else that we may need to separately vote on, I think, would be figuring out if we need to allocate funds to additional space for the wax room.
Can we go back to that slide? Because it wasn't clear to me how. Or maybe, Joe, you could just review it again. So we have a 30 by 60 that's too small. And the solution was to build another building to not put heat and electricity in the 30 by 60. But to put it in the other building or no?
Share. All right, now you can see the slide again. So the, when the $110,000 was allocated, from what I gather historically, the administrative team went back, got things ready to put out the RFP. Pardon?
I think Al was talking to his wife. I just.
Okay. Got everything to put out the RFP. The reality around the $110,000 is about 60 to 65 is the structure itself. The remainder was preparation of the site, electricity, ventilation, heat. And that's how you get up to 110. That 30 by 60 building is what fit within the funds allocated. And so it is going up right now. It is, it will have electricity, it will have heat, it will have ventilation. It won't have as much electricity as the Nordic waxing requirement would. Like, the sharing of the building in terms of how to take a 30 by 60 building and split it up across facilities, storage, athletic storage, Nordic waxing was what was drawing so much attention from the public in terms of saying this just isn't enough. This is not, this is not what we thought it would be when we were petitioning last year and two years ago. And so through conversations with facilities, the athletic department, the Nordic team, one possibility that we had looked at this week was to dedicate that 30 by 60 building to in-season athletic storage plus the Nordic ski waxing during the wintertime. The Nordic team indicated that they would happily figure out how to add the type of waxing tables that they want, along with the upgrade for the electric is running overhead electric with outlets similar to what we have in our science labs in a way that would allow the waxing irons to rest in the right way, right below them. So that's where they would be raising funds to be able to augment the building in the way that they would prefer. And the request for additional capital would be to procure a smaller building at the location of the old trailer office of around $90,000 to serve the facility storage building. So the tractor and oil and gas and their banging with their grease would be up in that separate area that is really just dedicated to staff, whereas students would be in the central to all the fields, well-lit, central to the parking lot location. And that could be a, perhaps, a way to make everybody happy if the school committee was amenable. So that's what I had meant to say there.
And. Carrie?
Yeah, what's the approximation for how much the team would need to fundraise for the upgrade to electric and the waxing tables?
We did not get down to that level of detail. Lindsay, if you're still there and if you'd like to insert any thoughts, I was feeling as though it was kind of the $10,000, $15,000, maybe $20,000 total realm, but I could be wrong.
I think now that we didn't do a huge amount of work on it because we didn't know how much of a possibility it was, but we can begin to move forward with it. We just knew that we had had a couple people offer to contribute in order to make this happen. And so if the only possibility to make this happen was adding overhead electricity to keep wires out of the way and any additional shelving needs or something they would have around it, that we think that would be possible once we knew which direction we were going.
Jamie, did you have a question?
No, I just, I just wanted to say that I I like the solution. If the numbers all add up on the raising additional funds. I don't know what the, you know, the upgrade of the electric is, maybe that could be built in some, I don't, I don't know. This solution makes sense to me. I liked how the school committee was in the district really was able to find the funds to fund this out of I don't know what revolving fund they came from or excess and deficiency, but I, I, I just really, I like this kind of solving this need for a program that is so inclusive and, you know, that kind of outpouring of support and the meaningful comments from such a wide range of people about how participation in the Nordic ski program has meant so much for so many different types of people that I think this is really a gem of a program.
Joe, did you want to say something?
No.
Not yet. I, I'm just trying to figure out what, what the motion would be.
Al, you're muted if you're talking.
Sorry. I, I moved that we accept the notion as presented by the administration. I was up there yesterday. It's an incredible, an incredible plan. It really was. Thank God for taking me on the, on the tour. It was we are so fortunate to have, have what we have and, and, and at the site that we have it, it is just I, every time I go up to Graylock, I get it. It really is incredible. But I, I, I make a motion that we, that we accept the recommendation as per what by the administration concerning the waxing in the building.
We don't know where the money is coming from yet.
We, yes, we talked about that. We are pretty confident about that though.
The extra 90,000 for the facilities building?
We are you might talk.
Yeah. I mean, if I might interject, the idea is that, that it was a, if Joe, correct me if I'm wrong, it was a hundred and 10,000 dollars was allocated for that shed. Through in money from nine, from 20 FY 20, excuse me. And so the issue is, is at this point that that money, we would need to find additional funds to put up a shed on the location that is where the currently the, the trailer is. In order to house the equipment that would, given this solution would no longer be housed in that building. So the prices, we were still pricing that out if I'm correct, Joe, that the concept would be to use something similar to the solution that was done here, which was a shed, a pole barn. That would then be put up and the, some of the advantages were the fact that there is already electricity going to that area. And there's already some, there was some prep, site preparation work that the, the trailer was put on. Did I get that right, Joe? Or is that?
Yes, all, all of that's correct. But, but, but we were, the, the possibility that we knew was a possibility was to allocate was to first devote the 30 by 60 building that is already going up to athletic storage and the Nordic ski teams needs. And second, to authorize up to ninety thousand dollars from the capital gift for the purpose of a facility's storage building on the site of the former office trailer. Now, the, that was, that was the, the possibility. What I would also offer up is, I mean, this year is such a rodeo. If, if it's possible to figure out how to, how to tuck that ninety thousand dollars into another location, that's something that we can certainly do at a later point in time. But right now I, I could not describe completely a, a, a positive way to go about that. And we, we do need and a school committee authorized source of funds in order for us to move forward. We, we can't just move forward with, with the hope that maybe it would be authorized at a later date.
I see Stephen, Carrie. I don't know who they're, had their hand up first.
Um, I, I think mine was up and down then up. So we've been talking about these needs for a long period of time. And when we had the conversations about the administrative multipurpose building, we were always very clear to say multipurpose that it was supposed to meet several needs. It seems like we are not meeting all the needs. This is something that has had strong support for years. When you look at the number of people involved, especially when you look at the, the cost here relative to the field project that we're discussing. You strongly support this. You know, let's make sure this gets done.
So, go ahead, Carrie.
Could it come out of choice and tuition rather than the capital gift?
It could not come out of choice. It should probably not come out of tuition, given the author, authorized uses both are, both are focused on educational needs. Trying to put a facility's storage building within educational needs is a stretch by the law. It, it could come out of E and D, but again, given the uncertain state of everything this year, I'm, I'm concerned about trying to tuck too much into that in this year.
I'll second Al's motion.
Okay. I have a motion that's moved and seconded. Any further discussion, Jamie?
Yeah, I just, I, I did not catch the language of the motion, just for the minutes of Al could, if you could
Joe has it actually?
Or someone, someone could help me out with that.
I, I just put a motion that we, that we approved the, the recommendation of administration as per their recommendations for the, the waxing building and the what do you call it, the shed? Is that what you're calling it?
Yeah, I, I'll, I'll just repeat what I had said. The, the motion would be to dedicate the 30 by 60 building that is already going up to athletic storage and the Nordic ski team. And to authorize up to ninety thousand dollars from the capital gift for the purpose of a facility's storage building located on the site of the office trailer.
Okay. I have a motion moved and seconded. Any further discussion? All in favor?
Call vote?
Yes, please. Alphabetically would probably be the easiest.
Bert, I.
Carter, I.
Conry, I. Green, I.
Ella, I.
Aaron, I.
Okay. Thank you. That vote passes.
Thank you for working out that solution. To the administration and athletics, everyone who worked on it. It's a good solution.
Okay. So back to the rest of the discussion on the capital gift and what to do next. We have a vote from, we have a prior vote to go back out to bid. And we need to figure out, we had recommended doing it in one way and we had agreed to go about, back out with the title nine of the ADA compliance being the bulk and then the three alternative, which we can't do. So the question is, where, where do we go from here? Carrie?
So one option is to send the, at request bid documents for the ADA compliance work with the add alternate being, the first add alternate being the track and the second add alternate being the synthetic turf. Or vice versa, right? You know, if we stipulate that the grass field does not solve the problem. Right? If we're all agreed that the problem is playability, that there's no point in putting in a grass field, we might as well just not do anything. Right? That's what I'm hearing. Oh, sorry, Ally. I don't mean to misquote you. I mean, it just sounds like another grass field will, will get the same kind of playability as as the other grass fields and it, and you're going to have to pay for irrigation and all those good things anyway. But anyway, so compliance, right? That's the base bid. And then that first add alternate is either turf or track in whichever order.
Yeah. I mean, that, that's a tough one because if you look at the numbers in terms of the athletic numbers, if we look just at sports, I think we have, if you combine soccer, lacrosse and football, we have more track and cross-country players. So that's a tricky one.
Lindsay, do you have, does Lindsay have a sense of the priority of those two?
That's a tough one to be put on the spot for, but I believe the synthetic turf would be used by more individuals. Because not only would it be the competition site, sometimes not all the time, as John Scaville said earlier, for two soccer teams, a football team and two lacrosse teams. It would also be the space for PE to use for seven, eight weeks when they don't have another space. And while a track would help them, it wouldn't allow them to participate in many of the activities that they do in PE. Not to mention that even in the spring, I could see our baseball, softball, track and possibly even tennis be on a synthetic field as opposed to the gym. And while a track, they could get their, their miles in, they might not be able to get their practice in. So if you add up the soccer players, the football players, the lacrosse players, you are definitely more than the track athletes, but I still think you have to add on PE and add that it will be other people using it just as a space as opposed to the, inside the gym.
So the motion could be to request bid documents for the base bid being compliance. And the first add alternate would be the synthetic turf with Brock fill. And the second add alternate would be the track.
Were there any other add alternates that we wanted other than track? Or was that it? I can't remember where we are with lighting and stuff like that.
Joe?
In, in, in the previous RFP, the, the lighting along with the turf field were part of the base package. So I, I think that the, the lighting would need to go out into the add alternate with the field, if the field went to be an add alternate, it wouldn't make sense to put lighting up without anything for it to light.
Right.
But, but there's also the related detailed question of how, where does this put the value engineering recommendations? And where does the school committee view trying to trying to decrease the probability that there is significant variance off of the, off of the, off of the estimates when we see the bids?
Because turf and compliance were all together, you're saying pulling them apart might increase or alter the, the bidding?
I, I guess I'm just saying that, that if, that if the administration is tasked with getting bid ready documents together, there would be a whole series of judgment questions that somebody would need to answer in order for that to be well done. And so we need to know who to turn to, to get those decisions made. So whether it's value engineering or if it's trying to make sure that we're specifying within the documentation enough so that we have tighter bounds within how people respond within their bids. We, we just need to know how to make those decisions because it's not apparent decisions for us to make on our own. I don't believe.
It sounds like there needs to be, you know, if it's, if it's going to be the finance committee that works with the administration, then it should include also the athletic director. And, you know, maybe some of the phase two folks who worked on these documents who are most familiar with the original bid documents. There should be a but it can be done through the finance committee, bringing other people in, I would think. The alternative is to rebid the value engineered synthetic turf field, the full package with the add alternate being the track. Probably be a whole, whole lot less work for everybody to do that.
Do you think there there's a wide section of the public that wants us to, for the school committee makes a final decision on approving any plans to demonstrate that we've considered what the, I know that there's, we're focusing on playability and hours and that, but there's a big interest in, in a more concrete cost comparison than we've delivered so far. And then there's also a big interest in identifying the source of funds to, to fund the, the carpet replacement cost in the future, if and when that needs to happen. And that's not something that we have done. We haven't tied a source of funds to that use or, or really taken any steps to explain to the public how we're going to build that into the budget. And then finally, I, I, I think we in some way should respond to at some point, and maybe it's not today, but respond to the comment from Dr. Sussman that we demonstrate or explain what our current thinking is on the reservation of some of the capital gift for future capital needs on the, on, of the school district. So I think those are issues that should be discussed at some point along with what the bid documents look like.
So I think we've heard from various town officials at various points that the request that we take some of that funding and just put it aside, like make a commitment to reserving a certain amount. And I think the finance subcommittee did vote to do that or recommended to the committee to do that at some point. It's really encouraging to see that the gift is up to 6.8. And that means that if we've used 3.1 and now a little bit more, you know, we have essentially point six more than we thought we did. So I'm trying to do some math here, 3.7. And then let's say the turf had come in, you know, so the question is like, can, we can say pretty easily that we have a million dollars. Right? We could do that now, I think. But what we can certainly say is that, you know, that is our goal. Our goal is to not accept bids that will put us over that million dollar mark in terms of what is, you know, what we will keep aside for rebuilding into an endowment. You know, I think that there were, there were folks who thought we were going to do that at some point. And I had always thought that we were going to just keep a very close eye on it. And, you know, really try to not cross a certain line. And I'm comfortable personally with that line being a million dollars. I know the committee had voted a higher, or the subcommittee had recommended a million five at some point. But I would be, you know, I would be fine absolutely committing it also. If if folks, you know, wanted to do that, a minimum of, you know, 1 million or something like that. I think I think that's a really smart thing to do. It is something that we have always talked about and could allay a lot of concerns. I also think, though, that, you know, even if we were to say we want to, we want bid documents, or we're going to put this out to bid, we can have a plan for financing before any bid is approved. Right? So that could be a commitment that the school committee makes as well. That we're not going to approve a bid, we're not going to accept a bid until our plan for long term financing is in place. So, you know, I think to yeah, that's just one suggestion.
Are you?
Oh, sorry, I didn't see you, Al.
Are you asking for are you asking for those numbers, Carrie? Okay.
No, not the long term financing. I I agree with you. We can figure that out. I don't have.
It's 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 not really money, it really is not is not the issue. The playability, playability is the issue. So I mean, we can we can do that. We can do that forever. We can figure out what to do in the next 10 years. We're smart people.
Steve?
I just wanted to briefly say, I know, I support saving money for the capital fund if possible, but it's important to remember that we've been spending money from the endowment from the gift that we should have been potentially putting into the town budget already. We've already used it. For some appears at Mount Graylock, we'd be using it for, you know, the trailers and stuff like that. So we have been relieving the towns of some of their financial burdens.
In reviewing documentation from past meetings, we did agree to set aside one to 1.5 for the future, for any future needs. Al?
When reading over the packet that we got, it really did. I said, oh, yeah, I remember that. And when you listed those 11 things, remember, when the first meeting we had, the original phase two meeting, we had in that that little room in the in the school, school. What was given to us was 11 options of what to do with with the money. And that was listed nicely in the packet that was given to us. Okay. And I remember going through all those options and coming up with with what we said was true. And and in that was the maintenance fund. Okay. Now, I can't speak for everyone. But I think I speak for the majority of people that were in that room. They thought of the maintenance fund as being the maintenance fund for the things that we were going to allot with the budget. The maintenance fund was not to pay for a clock that doesn't work in the library. So and just to and this idea now that also well, the maintenance fund was meant to, you know, paint the AV. No, it was it was, in my opinion, it was never meant that those people that met in that original room and reduce the the list of 11 things to three things. I don't think anyone in that room thought at that time that we're going to use the maintenance fund for what we consider capital expenditures of the school. And I think that's the latest in the long line of moving the goalposts that the non-turf people have been very successfully moved the public relations on. But that was never at any thought that maybe the members of the that were in the room with me that day can speak up. But not to my, not to my knowledge.
I have to switch to my phone. I just want to make sure people can hear me.
Okay, so where are we?
I'd like to make a motion. I'd like to move that we accept the recommendation of the base two original phase two committee, subcommittee to use a Brockville field. And all the other, I I I don't have it written down now. But I make motion that we accept the recommendation of the face to original committee, subcommittee. And which includes the Brockville field.
And the field? I mean, and the track and the value engineering?
No, 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 that's just the track, the track, the track is separate. Just, just, just on what? Just the field, okay? And and then we'll do, we'll do, we'll do the track. And originally, that was the original thought with the face too. Let's let's do, let's let's do the field first. And then for those that remember that, we were starting a subcommittee of the subcommittee to get funding for the track. And and which is no for people who are listening out there, we had soft commitments for that. By soft commitments, we had, we had people saying, oh, yeah, I'll support the track. Or I saw commitments, I hadn't even checked yet, but they were committed to it. The track is separate. I think we should move on today is that take a take a vote that we're going to put in a Brockville field. Okay, a turf field, Brockfield turf field as per recommended by the original face to subcommittee and deal with the track later. And I don't mean to be facetious by saying this. When we talk about the track, we are talking about a rubber track, right? When I talk about a grass track, we're going to put in a rubber track. Then we'll keep that in mind. My motion would be, the motion would be to vote in favor of the, I don't want to vote in favor of the phase two subcommittee to install a Brockville field.
A motion from Al. I have a motion from Al, and from Al Taranova, do I have a second?
This is Miller, I'll second, but I do think we should include the track.
Well, at least the track as an add on.
Okay.
Friendly motion, right, to add the trackers in that. But I think that was originally said by the face to we'll go forward with the field and then add the track up there on.
I have a motion from Al that's seconded by Stephen Miller, discussion, and I have a question. Do we need to rescind the vote that we made before we can vote on this motion? I mean, we made, we we rejected a bid and said that we were going to go forward with new bids. And we were very clear about what that is. And now we're not feeling very genuine to that vote and to the discussions we had post that vote and where we are going to go and what we're going to do. We haven't met those steps that we had set to do. We I don't know what else to say.
I think I think Lindsay made it clear that that's a mute vote because as as voted in then that if I understand Lindsay correctly, that we can't do what we voted. So it became mute. The vote, the motion was was unusable, heard it correctly.
Jamie?
Along those, along those lines.
Jamie?
Just along the, okay.
Jamie, you add your hand up.
Yeah, I think there, I think that what I heard from Lindsay's comments and then Joe's further investigation is that it's it's not exactly settled what the appropriate way to design the bid is to achieve the goal of the 2019 vote. But that it is possible that there would be a way to structure it in one or more bids. So I don't think that's a moot point. I don't think that's necessarily off the table.
And then we need, we need a friendly, we need a friendly amendment.
Can Al, can Jamie finish, please?
I'm sorry, I apologize.
And and then I will, I will just say the motion as as drafted now is a mo is a vote in favor to install a Brock filter field with a track as an addition. We were skipping the bidding part in the development of the going out for the RFP and the whole procurement process in this motion is drafted. So I'm concerned that we might be headed in the wrong direction with this motion. And by the way, it's like, I hate to to do this, but I'm going to just see if I can reschedule my three o'clock meeting. So I'm going to turn off my screen for a little bit.
Thank you, Jamie.
When we make a motion and if we accept my motion and second, okay, that makes the assumption that obviously we're going to go out to bid, okay? And then when it comes, when it comes back from it, okay, we move from there. Personally, I think whatever the bid is, we should do it. But that's my own personal, that's my own person. But we have to start the process. And the process is safe for everyone is that we are going to, we are going to put, because of all the work that has been done, we are going to have an artificial Brock filter. And now we're going to figure out how to buy, how to how to expand it. And we can do that. We can take, we can take the 3.6, we can take, we have, we have more than sufficient amount of money to install a Brockville field. We do. We have 6.7 million dollars.
Steve, did you have a comment?
Yes, I was just going to say, I remember we had the grant compromise years ago about voting on the administrative multipurpose building and the fields. And we were told that the way we structured things was not legal and we had to revote. So we unfortunately do have a history of finding additional information in terms of how we are allowed to structure bid.
Joe?
The the process that we need to unfold with some form of guidance from the school committee would be that first, the the detailed design documents necessary for being able to go out to bid would need to be formulated. Then we would need to go before Williamstown ZBA regarding the lighting as well as the site plan review around erosion, stormwater, endangered species, things like that. Because we're we're touching more than, I believe it's 20,000 square feet of surface on the campus. And then after that, we could go out and solicit bids. And once the bids come back, that is when the school committee would review the results and either select or not select that are based on the procurement rules that would be in effect.
Carrie?
So it sounds like the motion would be to move the value engineered recommendation from phase two into detailed design. That's the motion that Al is making with an add alternate for a track. The alternative would be to make a motion to do that and at the same time move a grass field into detailed design with compliance and you know, the the whole package, but using a grass field instead of a turf field. Right? So the phase two recommendation as value engineered, but instead of a turf field, it would be a grass field. So what does that look like using grass and not synthetic turf? That would be another possibility of what to move into detailed design. Joe, you look very quizzical. So am I wrong about that?
Sorry, I was just trying to think through all the everything that's happening.
Right. I'm just in terms of like, if we move this process forward into detailed design and we go before the ZBA and we solicit bids and all the while people are saying, but you didn't get a number on grass. And we say, but grass doesn't solve the solution of playability. And the response is, but you didn't get the information we asked for on grass. One way to do that is to get the information that is asked for on grass. And if we don't have to separate it apart, right? So Joe, here is where I'm asking, and I don't mean to get really confusing about this, but before I was talking about the base bid being the compliance and then adding grass and then adding, and we talked about that being like $42,000 was, you know, going to be the bid. Would that be the case? Would it cost us $42,000 to bid the phase two package as value engineered, but with a grass field instead of a synthetic turf field? Would it?
We would, we would need to talk with Perkins Eastman about that as to what that would mean.
Okay, because I think that really could solve the public relations issue. You know, we're looking at the same work. But instead of synthetic turf, we'd be using natural grass, does not solve the playability issue. Right? But we're getting the information that has been requested. And we're getting it in terms of a bid document so that if the ZBA says, I mean, the ZBA might say, look, the turf works, but the grass isn't going to work. At least we'll know that information. Right? It is going to cost more money. It's going to cost more money to do two separate bids, but that's.
Just, just to be clear, we have no indication from the from the town. I mean, I mostly gone before the ZBA is dotting i's and crossing t's. We have no indication that there's anything here that would not be accepted, just to be clear.
Yeah, I didn't mean to imply that. Thank you.
I don't want to move the question, but but we keep on talking about this. You know, let us define what the problem is. The problem is playability. Grass does not solve the problem to spend $40,000 to get a bid on something that doesn't solve the problem. When we have to build, when we just made a motion about the waxing thing, etc. When we make motions and we add the things to be done, that means of course money to do that. That isn't a free, that isn't a free service. And not only is it not a free service, but it pushes back everything. Okay, we already have asked for one waiver for the AD, for the ADA and for the Title IX. Now we're going to ask for a second waiver. We started this process as 2016. If we ask for a second waiver, that means that we're going to have become compliant with ADA in 2023. We're going to take seven years to meet compliance. We've got to move forward, but we can't answer again. I want to say one last thing. I empathize what you people in Williamstown, I really do. If you saw there wasn't one question, there wasn't one public opinion of anyone from Lanesboro. They all came from Williamstown, and I empathize with that. I empathize that you people are getting, getting getting asked questions, etc. I never get asked any of those questions. Okay, and I really empathize what your position is. And I, but there's nothing I can do about that. I was high, I was electing the school to school committee to solve problems for the Berkshire County Regional School Committee, and that's what I'm trying to do. And that's why I'm in favor of Brockville field. I don't know what else more to say.
Can I just add a quick comment, Christina?
Yes.
So I think the point to mention and remember is, you know, 42,000, that's essentially half of what we need for the ski issue. The money keeps adding up. And if the question is, and if this is something the committee can decide upon right now to say, we've heard the concerns of the community. We understand that members of the community feel strongly about both alternatives, you know, turf. We understand that members of the community feel strongly about both alternatives, you know, turf and out of turf and natural grass. But we feel that playability is the most important issue. And because of that, that is why the committee supports going forward with a bid on the artificial turf. Because for us, the deciding factor, as we thought about this more and more, as we saw what's going on right now, as we heard from the athletic directors, we've seen at the beginning of the school year when we were talking about, you know, schedules and being able to have kids play, this became the key issue. Thank you.
Okay, we have a motion that's been moved and seconded. Do we have any further discussion, Jamie?
Yeah, I just want to just flag the concern of what this vote will do for the school committee's goodwill with not just townspeople. Certainly, they're, Al's right, there's been a lot of concern from townspeople in Williamstown, none from anybody in Lanesboro that I, I noticed. But we also have had expressions of deep concern with both boards of selectmen and finance committees about, you know, how we proceed with an artificial surface field for cost concerns and the, and the future cost concerns more than any, anything else. So I just, I think we should be considerate of that and careful about how we do this. And I am, I have concerns about a motion to go out to bid with a project that's going to tee up another vote without, in some way, trying to address some of the other concerns that have been raised along the way.
Thank you, Jamie. Any further discussion? Okay.
You have a que- question before we vote, what we're actually voting on? If there was a, you know, Carrie noted that the motion might be amended. Um, but it, that hadn't been made. So just to get us in procedurally in a posture where we know what we're all voting on, let me just say what the, the motion as it was friendly amended is to vote in favor of fa- of the phase two subcommittee's recommendation to install a Brock filter field with the track as an add-on. That's what we got.
And does the phase two recommendation include ADA and Title IX compliance?
Yes, that was all part of the, when we talked about the plan, we talked, the, the, there's no controversy about ADA and Title IX, the controversy about the field.
I'm just reading what the motion is.
Right, right, right.
That's not in the motion right now, just so we're all clear.
No, but 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 part of, part of the, part of the recommendation from, from phase two is indeed ADA and Title IX. There's aren't, there's aren't, there's aren't separate recommendations.
In order for clarity for the public, I think it should be amended, amended with the ADA and Title IX compliance. Because people don't know what the phase two recommendation was.
Sure.
I think that needs to be made more clear.
That makes me quit, that, that.
Withdraw the motion and then we can draft something that fits with what, what it is that you want to vote on? Is that okay?
Were you directing that to me?
Yes, yeah. You withdraw that motion, we can recraft it.
What, what I, what the motion is to be voted on, I guess, is the three elements. Okay, that was what I, what was presented by the phase two subcommittee is that not only do the ADA compliance, not only do Title IX compliance, but the liability thing, we're, we're going to have Brockfield field. That's, that's what the recommendation is from, from, from the face of. I, I was the chair of John Skelton exactly what the recommendation was. But yes, it included ADA and included Title IX and included the turf. I don't know how you want, I don't know how you want to structure that.
Well, you, you can just redraft it right now and just say it right now. And then Al can accept that as a friendly amendment and I'll.
Or, or let me just, let me just suggest is that we might also take some time to pull a motion together, a written motion together and, and handle this. We have a meeting on Thursday. Just saying, we have, we don't have to, we do not have to rush a half-baked. And I'm going to just say it, this motion is a half-baked, it just goes right to install. It doesn't go through the, the, the process of permitting and procurement.
Just a little aside and to bring a little humor into this, if we don't vote today, I owe my wife a dinner. So I just, just to let, just to let you know that, because that's her position, that we're not going to make a decision today. And I'm over dinner if we don't make a decision, so.
I think you should always listen to your wife. I just, you know. Words to live by.
I want, I want, I want this motion to end now. I'm telling you, I won't say it again. I want to dig a hole tomorrow. Come on, guys. Either for it or you're not for it. You can't go on like this forever. The, the issue is not ADA, the issue is in Title IX, the issue is in money, the issue is in pollution, the issue is, the issue is a Brockville field. Come on, it has to stop.
I mean, the, the question is, how much money do we want to keep spending on different bids? And I understand how some people feel that the process has been rushed. But just to reiterate, we've been discussing this for four to five years. All the phase two subcommittee meetings have been open, these concerns have been aired, they have been addressed. The items have been changed because of that. And what, what I feel right now is, you know, we have these add-ons because we didn't have enough money and so we had to remove things. And we're going to be removing more things because we're spending more money on more bids. If we can agree, as Carrie said before, that playability is the number one issue, then rather than spending money on more studies and more bids, let's save the money and spend it on things such as the ski building or lights or stuff like that.
Let's move the motion.
Any further discussion? Um, Ally, I, I think your hand went up first.
Thanks, um. Just a few quick things, um. So I, I do see how the use of the word install could be problematic and wonder if we could reword the motion. Um, I also want to ask where, where did our conversation ended up on potentially voting now on a $1 million endowment? And do we want to consider doing that first? And I also just wanted to make the point, we've, we've, several people have mentioned playability being the primary concern. But I want to be clear that it's not playability in spite of other significant issues. It's playability with those concerns mitigated to a great extent, if not fully. We're talking about a largely, not 100% recyclable, but pretty innovative, environmentally friendly field, does not have chemicals in it that people are concerned about. The company has an effort to be carbon neutral. They're focused on climate. It does not get hot like crumb rubber. It's 20 to 40 degrees, they estimate cooler than crumb rubber to play on, so that heat is not a concern. It doesn't need to be watered. There are, injuries are reduced on Brockville compared to crumb rubber. The Brockville, some people have mentioned the NFL Players Association not wanting to play on crumb rubber. And this company actually sees itself as a potential alternative that fits that need. And, and so I just, I just want to make sure that it's clear that we're, we are, that the, the phase two subcommittee has listened to all of those concerns and that the Brockville recommendation addresses or largely addresses a lot of those concerns and has the playability factor. So it's not, I, I just don't want people to think that it's playability ignoring all of the other things that have come up.
Carrie, you add your hand up?
I, I wonder, did the phase two committee ever, did they look into the recycled synthetic turf? Was that the one that was like $40,000 more?
Yes, it was $40,000 more and there was no information on the life cycle of that product.
Okay, so I think Al's motion reworded would be to move the phase two recommendation, which includes compliance for Title IX and ADA and synthetic turf as value engineered and using Brockville into detailed design. I think that's the motion that Al is making.
That's a friendly amendment?
That is a friendly amendment.
So, so in essence, just be sure, Rockville, ADA, Title IX.
With the track as an add alternate.
With, with the track as an add. And what that means, Peter, I know, that means that, that we may, we may be doing the field and we may do ADA and we may be doing the Title IX, but we won't be doing a track at the same time.
We might be, depending on.
We might, yes, yes, I, right, absolutely correct.
More in the endowment, that actually might be where that.
Absolutely correct. We might be doing, we might be doing four projects at one time, you're correct. But we know we want to do these three immediately. That's the motion.
Joe doesn't look convinced.
Can we move it now?
Not until Joe smiles. I mean, I, you don't have to.
I, I, I'm just trying to figure out how, how to make any of this operational in that, that, that there was, I'm, I'm looking at the December 9th meeting minutes from phase two. I, I don't see a formal recommendation there. I, I do know that there's a whole series of value engineering options that Traverse had put forward. But I don't see a specific set that a committee recommended we, we take back to modify the RFP as it had gone out in September. Looking at the value engineering, I can see things where just to me personally, it makes sense to move them to add alternate status in order to create more wiggle room financially. But I, I guess I'm not really sure what to do when this motion goes through, that's all I'm saying. I, and, and I, and I don't want to come back two weeks from now and say, guess what, I, I don't know, actually, I don't know what to do.
Right, so we have the value engineering document, right? But that never went back, the, the proposal was never, there were, there were no bid documents that resulted from that value engineering. Because that, it went to the, the value engineering was a result of, I think, John and Lindsay and phase two discussing. And then Traverse sent the value engineering document and then it went to phase two for discussion. But then that never was actualized, that value engineered plan. Lindsay has her hand up so she may.
Is it okay if I, Christina, if I?
Yeah.
We, we created a list based on what was sent to us. But Traverse was asked to provide additional options with some specific pricing and that I do not believe was ever received because suddenly we got to the point where they didn't know what they were going to be paid to continue doing. But based on the list that they sent us, we do have a list of what we were okay with and what we recommended. But they were supposed to send additional information and I don't believe that ever happened. But I do have my notes on what was sent to us and what we said yea or nay to.
And probably, and what I was going to say before, is that needs to be reassessed, that value engineering list, right? Just like looked over again. So what, what do we have, Joe? So we have, we have the documents that went out to bid. We have the knowledge that they came in to high. We have a value engineering list that was done a year ago. That probably needs to be looked at again. And then that list needs to be applied to the original bid documents and they need to be redone. And then go back into detailed design, right? And then put out to bid, going to the ZBA first. So that sounds like the order of things.
That, that would be an orderly way to get this, yeah.
Okay, so that's what needs to happen in order to accomplish this particular motion. So where, where did we start incurring costs? We start incurring cost, so, okay. Let's think practically here. A group of people can get together in the next week and look at the value engineering list and the bid documents and say, yes, this makes sense, or no, we should probably revise it and then send it back to Traverse. And that's when the clock starts ticking. When Traverse gets that value engineering list, they then need to redo the bid documents, put them into detailed design. And that's what we're going to pay for. So I don't know if there's a way to get around that. I mean, we're going to need to pay for it in order to make this happen. But that has to happen. We know that has to happen. At that point, we then need to get on the ZBA's schedule and then we need to solicit bids. So we're talking, you know, time here that's going to pass during which time more community discussion will inevitably happen. But this will at least be in process. So that if the, if it looks like this is the right thing for the community to do, we will be more steps down the road. The question still for me and for lots of other people out there is, should we also at the same time be doing this substituting grass for turf? Right? Or saying, let's just not do the turf now and get the compliance done and take more time to figure out a solution. You know, and maybe the solution is, we're not going to spend the money at all because it's COVID and the community doesn't like the process and their trust issues. And then, you know, we, we've already gone through it, so we don't need to reiterate all of the issues that have come up. But, you know, that is an option to just vote compliance. I personally would have no problem voting compliance right now. Let's move forward with compliance. But that is a different bid document and that is going to cost us money because we haven't done just compliance. We've done the whole package of synthetic turf and all the compliance. And it still is going to need to be value engineered down probably. So, you know, this is, Al, this is to say, this is none, none of this is simple and straightforward. If we want to move forward with your motion, we now.
I do want to move forward, let's vote on it one way or the other. If we wrote it down, you guys got to come up with a, with an alternative to, to the motion. Okay, but, but we're.
The alternative.
Three hours and 30 minutes. I mean, three hours and 34 minutes. I don't know if everyone.
The alternative is that a group internal to Mount Greylock looks at the value engineering in the bid documents.
I don't want to do any of that. We, we have done that. Christina, I want to move the motion. I want to move the motion.
Hey, Al. Al, Carrie's trying to help you out. She's trying to come, come up with a pathway for your, what you want to achieve. So at this point, so I wouldn't be so quick to tell her that you don't want to do what she's, she's talking through because it's what she's talking through is responsive to Joe's question of how do we operationalize your motion? And Carrie is just fleshing out how that process worked. It's not as simple as making a vote today and then calling up a, you know, a back, you know, a loader tomorrow to start digging dirt.
I, I, I agree with Jamie.
I apologize, Carrie. I didn't, I didn't need to say that. My feeling is that if we make the motion and pass for, we resolve those problems and those problems are definitely resolvable. But if we just keep on doing what we're doing now, they'll never get resolved. I, I, I hope you didn't feel that. I was being disrespectful to you. It's just a frustration.
As it is on the table, doesn't do anything. It doesn't do what you want it to do. I'm trying to make it do what you want it to do. That's all.
I, I.
But we can vote your motion.
Yep, we can vote the motion. If, if no further discussion, then.
Jamie, can you repeat Al's motion?
Yep, I can. Al's motion was, let me find it. Al moves to vote in favor of Phase Two Subcommittee Recommendation to install a Brockville turf field with track as an add-on, second by Miller. And Carrie had a, Carrie had a friendly amendment went on, but we didn't act on the friendly amendment.
I think we need to hear out what Carrie was saying.
So Carrie's friendly amendment was she proposed that we move the Phase Two Recommendation, which includes compliance for Title IX, ADA and synthetic turf as valued engineered and Brockville with the track as an add alternate into detailed design. And then after that was proposed but not accepted, there's a, there was discussion of a specific set of recommendations from the value, value engineering process. But those recommendations would then need to be selected, which ones we want, how we want to approach each of them. And then depending on how that review process goes, actually incorporated into bid documents. And, and I'm going to just just as, if I can just say one thing, the question I have right now is, if we're making this motion, are we also authorizing the expensive design funds to do the paperwork? Or is that coming later?
Yeah, that's later.
Okay.
As the person who seconded the motion, I.
I am, I am truly confused. I mean.
Steve, did you want to add something?
Yeah, what I, what I was just, just saying is that, you know, this is similar to your conversations we had about back to school. We can't just say we want back to school. We have to talk about how are we actually going to dot the i's, what are we actually going to do? And so I, I think it is, you know, worth being explicit about how we're going to deal with, you know, the list of add-ons that we wanted because, you know, we have seen that it is extremely important that they are in the right order.
Thank you, Steve, to help me a little bit. Okay, Carrie, I'll accept your friendly, I'll accept your friendly amendments. If that will move, move forward on a vote on Brockville.
I don't know if I have to accept as the one who seconded, but I will accept it.
Okay, any further discussion?
I just want to make sure that administration has what they need.
So the plan would be to take that value engineering list and the bid documents and assess whether there should be any changes and then bring that to the committee, I think. So that we know exactly what we're spending money on. What, what is it that we're asking for to be detailed design? So I don't know if it should go to the Finance Committee first and then to the committee or the Finance Committee will be the venue during, you know, through which this work happens. But that's the, we're not voting to spend money yet. We're voting to take this next step essentially, which is to reassess the bid documents or, you know, with the value engineering.
Well, I, I want to make sure that we know when we're going to be voting on whether or not we send something out to bid and that we don't just have, you know, discussion after discussion after discussion. So what would be the timeframe to then vote on sending this out to bid?
I, I would think by next week, we could vote on a detailed design, you know, sending something for detailed design. That's the next step. That's where you, that's where we start paying money because we have to do that.
Right.
And then it has to go to the ZBA and then we can solicit bids. So there will be a period of time for this all to play out. We're voting on the direction right now, which is what Al wants.
Would it be worthy, would it be worthwhile to just put that into the, basically say, have that, the four steps that you outlined, Carrie? And put that into some, put that into this motion somehow.
Are those in the motion, Jamie? Okay.
They are not in the motion.
So the motion right now is what? Sorry.
Motion right now as accepted is to move the Phase Two Recommendation, which includes compliance for Title IX, ADA and Title IX, compliance for Title IX and ADA and synthetic turf as value engineered and Brockville with the track as an add alternate into detailed design. It's the, it's the into detailed design part, I think that needs to be flushed out, the steps.
Right. Okay, so then I'll add to that motion. Step one is to have an internal review of the value engineering list and the bid documents. Step two is the School Committee should vote on the recommendation for value engineering prior to detailed design. Step three is detailed design. Step four is ZBA review. Step five is solicit bids.
Can we put in a timeline for when the School Committee will vote, say, seven to 10 days?
You mean vote on sending it to detailed design?
Yes.
Yeah, I think that, well, I don't know. When is the next Finance Committee?
We, we've, we have an Education Committee, Committee scheduled for next Thursday. And then the following School Committee.
Finance, Rob?
Well, actually, if we, if we were to do finance, because we have the other school, if we could schedule finance for next week just prior to the Thursday School, to the Thursday Education School Committee.
Yep.
That sounds good. So for the October 22nd meeting.
And, and the results of that meeting would really just be the report on the analysis of the value engineering and the bid documents and then a vote on basically the vote that would be descending into Traverse. Was that, is that the idea?
Does this make sense operationally, Joe?
Yes, so between now and next Thursday, the Finance Committee should prepare to review the documents that we already have up on the website regarding value engineering on top of the RFP that had already gone out last fall. And I will contact Perkins Eastman and Traverse and see what it would require for us to move some or all of those into the RFP so that the School Committee next Thursday could potentially vote to authorize some use of funds to have them do that work to create the detailed design.
Right.
Okay.
I think it's important, though, that Lindsay at least be part of the conversation. So would it make sense to try to meet before Thursday? I don't know what anybody's time is like. Or we could do it on Thursday. I suppose it doesn't matter.
Lindsay and I can, can definitely spend time together talking through this so that then when it gets to the committee, we've got recommendations to bring to the committee that can then recommend them to the full School Committee.
I, I would suggest also, I would also suggest reaching out to people on Phase Two who have been part of these conversations for years and see if any of them are around and happy to contribute to the discussions. I'm, I'm happy to come to more meetings.
Okay, so we have another amendment. Has that been moved and seconded?
I added the. I added this. Al, do you cut those steps?
Run it past me one more time. Would you like me to read what I have written down?
Yeah, go ahead.
Move the Phase Two Recommendation, which includes compliance for Title IX and ADA and the synthetic turf field as value engineered in Brockville with the track as an add alternate into detailed design by the following process: Internal Review of Value Engineering and Bid Documents. That'll be done by the Finance Committee. School Committee Review and Approval of the.
Go through the steps again, I'm sorry.
Internal Review of Value Engineering List and Bid Documents. School Committee Review and Approval of Value Engineered Decisions and Bid Documents. Development of Detailed Design Documents, ZBA Review and Go Out To Bid. I'm happy, if I got that wrong, let me know.
So I'm happy to accept this as a friendly amendment and I am happy that I am no longer the Secretary of the School Committee.
I'll, I'll take a friendly amendment. And.
Okay, any further? You have to accept the amendment, yep.
Yeah, I have to accept the friendly amendment. But I accept the friendly amendment.
Okay, so we have a motion with amendments that have been moved and seconded. Any further discussion, Carrie?
My only comment is that there are a bunch of comments in the chat and we don't typically have the chat open because it's really a way for the public participate, which, or you don't do during deliberations. So I don't know what we want to do with that. This is a technical issue.
Yeah, I haven't been looking at the chat feature.
I don't even, I don't know what you're talking about. I don't have chat at all, so.
Can we save the chat?
I think they, if they're open, if they were comments made to the entire group, they will be saved with the recording.
Okay, and I haven't read them either, so I'm but I would like to read them later, if that's possible.
Rob?
I could download them and send you if you, if you would so desire.
Okay.
If you could send them to everyone?
Yes, of course.
Thank you.
Okay, so we have a motion that has been moved and seconded. Any further discussion? Roll call vote alphabetically, please.
Art, no.
Carter, I. Conry, no.
This is so unfair. This is making me the swing vote. I knew this was going to happen. This is terrible. So what am I committing to here? I'm committing to a process. Sorry, I have to think this out. The process is going to begin with an internal review. A green eye.
Miller, I.
Paranova, I.
Okay, so we have four in favor, two against. That motion passes. Okay. Thank you, everyone, for all of your input and discussion. And thank you, Jamie, for canceling a meeting. I really appreciate that. I do not have any other business. Do I have a motion to adjourn?
Do we want a motion on the million dollar endowed fund?
Can, can I just suggest that we, we, because it's timing wise, that we put that on for a future School Committee meeting?
Yep, we should definitely add that. Okay, do I have a motion to adjourn?
Miller, I hope it's not as controversial.
Miller, move. Do I have a second?
Second it.
Turnover seconds. Any further discussion? All in favor, roll call alphabetically, please.
Or I.
Carter.
Conry, I. Green eye.
Miller, I.
Paranova, I.
Thank you. This meeting is adjourned at 3:48 PM. Thank you, everyone, for your participation.
Take care.
Have a good one.
For Joe, Joe, before we end, I'm looking at how to do this file and I'm not having, I'll have his problem on it. Oh, see, there it's got it.
Did you get it, Rob?
I do it indeed. I did indeed. Now I have it.
Okay.
Okay, got it. I'll send it off to everybody.
Thank you. Rob, can you still see me?
Please, sorry, I'm, I'm, yes, I'm, hi there.
Can you send it to, to us as well so we can turn it around?
Certainly. Hold on just a sec. Because I was busy keeping everything going here.
Oh, my gosh, I know. What a meeting.
Oh, yes. Be Dane at Willie Lynn. There we go.
Yeah, and I'm going to give you, if you could also send it to my guy. His name, it's JW Criddle.
JW C.
R I D D L E.
Right.
At gmail.com.
C R D D L E.
With an I, Criddle.
There we go. That's what I thought. I just. J W C R I. D D L, D D L E at gmail.com.
Beautiful, yes.
There you have it. It's on its way.
Okay, thanks so much. Have a good weekend.
You too.